Good evening and welcome to Spokane City Council. Welcome. I'd like to start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they share this place and welcome other tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustice toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember, sorry.
Bingo.
Councilmember Bingo.
Here.
I'm used to looking at you.
I cover my name, yeah.
Councilmember Klinsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Dylan is absent.
I would also accept Councilmember Hoop Town USA. That would work for me as well, so.
Thank you. I'm going to start off with Mr. Wright.
Oh, okay. We have a special milestone to recognize tonight. A certain individual on the council staff has worked here for five years. Actually, four years, 358 days. In a week, he will celebrate his fifth anniversary working for the council. Mr. Jacoby Byrd.
I'd like to have. Of course, I'd like to say a few words unless you other councilmembers want to go first.
Yeah, I'll go first, yeah. You know, there've been a lot of people who've come and gone from our office. Some were not very helpful at all to everybody, some very helpful to all. And at the top of that list, at or near the top of that list is Jacoby Byrd. Jacoby does a fantastic job for the city. Jacoby is very good at overlooking, you know, overcoming whatever political feelings he has to serve the council and to serve the council well. And I think that he is an example that many could follow. And by that example, I think we would all have far better discourse in politics. And so Jacoby is a guy that I am very excited to work with every day and appreciate his service to the city, so.
Thank you. I would like to, Jacoby, say you are dedicated, hardworking, collaborative, and knowledgeable. And I'm talking about our council's MVP, Jacoby Byrd. There are not enough words in the dictionary to describe Jacoby's contributions to our council office. That is why it is with great pleasure that we honor Jacoby for his five years of service to the city of Spokane and to our council. Jacoby, we know you don't like public recognition. Are you turning red yet? But you're our office treasurer and we would be remiss not to acknowledge this moment. I have had firsthand experience watching your growth from legislative assistant for former councilmember Lori Kinnear to becoming her aide during her council presidency to serve as our council office director. You have set an example for leadership and growth amongst your peers. Overall, what you bring to us and our office is immeasurable and we are so grateful for your service. We applaud you, Jacoby, for five years of service. I'd like to honor you with this five-year pin.
Council President.
Yes.
Can I just say, Jacoby, I just want to thank you for all of your hard work and, you know, you are a true leader in the council office and I really appreciated you. You know, you don't let politics get in the way. You don't let personalities get in the way. You just try to get right to the bottom line and I'm really grateful for it, so thank you.
Thank you so much for that.
Mind if I say something? Thank you all for the acknowledgement. I just, I grew up in Spokane and went to school outside of this city and then decided to come back to it because I love it so much and I love serving our community and working with all of you. So I get embarrassed and red and sweaty when you talk about me, but I appreciate the recognition deeply. Thank you.
Most deserving. Thank you so much. With that, we're going to go on. We do have, we're going to vote on two appointments to our Plan Commission this evening. And I have those two names right in front of me. David Edwards from District One and Amber Linhardt from District One. I will entertain a motion for approval of these two people to the Plan Commission.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept David Edwards and Amber Linhardt for the Plan Commission.
Council President.
Yes.
Can we, can we split the two into two different?
We can, absolutely.
If we could, that would be appreciated.
There's already been a motion in a second. We'd have to vote no on the motion to do that.
We can withdraw.
Give us, give us a ruling, Mr. Wright.
What's the question, whether you need?
They want to be voted separately.
Separate, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's appropriate on, if any councilmember requests it.
There's a motion already.
Do I need to withdraw the motion?
We'd have to vote no on the motion to make the new motion.
Or you can withdraw that motion. Have you already stated it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then council should vote to allow withdrawal of the motion and then proceed to.
Can I get a motion to withdraw the motion?
Yes, so moved.
It's been moved in second to withdraw the original motion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, is there a motion to approve? Can I get a motion to approve David Edwards?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve David Edwards. Councilmember Bingo.
Yeah, so I, I'll be voting against both tonight. A little foreshadowing for what's coming next. But I asked some questions earlier today. I was not satisfied with the response. I appreciate that they both come from District One and I want to appreciate and shout out administration for working hard to find District One representation on these boards and commissions. I appreciate it. I really have one thing that I want to see. As we are constricted on how we can move out, we have to be able to build up. And I asked a couple of questions on, you know, are height restrictions something that are appropriate? And if so, where? And the answer I got was either I'm not sure or it seemed as if, you know, it was trending in the other direction. And that's a huge problem for me because we need housing. We need development desperately in this area. For those of you who don't know, the way that we add money to our tax rolls every year is through our, the best way that we can do it is through development and getting property tax on the books. The best way that we can build if we can't build up is build up. Or if we can't build out is to build up. And so for those reasons, I'll be voting against both of them tonight.
Any other commentary on Mr. Edwards? I will be voting in favor of Mr. Edwards. These people are just, he does have a background in planning, but it is a committee. One person will not drive the total direction of the Plan Commission. I'm excited to have representation from District One. And is there anyone else who wants to speak to this? Councilmember Bingo, really, that's not appropriate for you to speak again. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Councilmembers, Zepone.
Yeah, I'll just say that I think that they'll do, he'll do a great job and I'm excited to support him in this role.
All right. All those in favor of Mr. Edwards, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
That passes. Next person up is, can I get a motion to approve Amber Linhardt?
So moved.
Second? And second to approve Amber Linhardt. Any council discussion? Councilmember Bingo.
All right, yeah, again, I appreciate everybody's civic service, wanting to be a part of their city and stepping up. I really commend, you know, everybody who does that. And as was stated, one person isn't going to be able to do a lot on that committee. But I asked three different people today what they thought about it and all three gave me, in my opinion, poor answers on that question. And so one, maybe not, but three, for sure. And so I'll be voting against all three of them. More foreshadowing for the next meeting.
Are you talking, are you talking to the camera? Anybody else, commentary?
Just looking around.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I, I like Amber a lot. Personally, I think, I think she's great. She used to work alongside the ZONE project in Northeast Spokane. I think she's great. But some of her answers did concern me a little bit with regards to just being a bit not so focused on planning and more focused on health equity. And, and so I just feel like there's probably a really good place for Amber to be, but I don't think the Plan Commission is necessarily it right now. I want folks who are really focused on planning and housing and development and improving, you know, growing the community that way. And so, you know, Amber said a lot of really great things and I like her a lot. But again, I just didn't think she quite met sort of what we need on the Plan Commission right now.
Councilmember Dylan. And then Councilmember Klinsky.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly support Amber. Really want to thank her for stepping up. And I do think her approach to public health and equity framework, that really does intersect with so many different issues. Obviously, planning and housing are core components of that.
Councilmember Klinsky.
Yeah, as someone who's worked on land use and transportation issues for the last 20 years, I see a very strong intersection between health and land use and transportation infrastructure. And I'm glad that Amber does as well. Before the pandemic, there was a rising movement to do health impact assessments on larger decisions that the city makes and other jurisdictions across the country when it comes to land use and transportation. And I think that barring doing that through our health district, it is good to have a public health lens on our planning commission.
Councilmember Navarrete.
I'm also going to support the appointment of Amber. I feel that if we tend to appoint people to fulfill our own agendas, then either nobody's going to be appointed or everybody's going to be appointed. Also, that's why there's a committee because there's different ideas coming. And the people that are being appointed tonight, they're not going to be all the decision makers. There's going to be a whole group. Their background is amazing and also the health equity piece is very important in this position.
There is a motion in a second on the floor to approve Amber Linhardt for Plan Commission. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
No.
Any abstentions? That is approved. Thank you all. Now, I got ahead of myself. I'd like to acknowledge World Refugee Day and thank you to the food that was provided by Feast out in the for you if you have the ability or opportunity to take advantage of that. I'd like to invite up Deanna Rivas from Venezuela and Wahid Abdul, if they're still with us, to come on down. And also Meli Stipler to come on down and give us a word on the state refugees. Yes, the microphone there. Yes, there you go.
Hi. Nice to meet you. My name is Deanna Rivas. I am from Venezuela and I arrived in Spokane nine months ago through World Relief. I'm a refugee and I speak Spanish, so I need help with language. She is my interpreter today.
Hi, my name is Meli and I'm going to be interpreting.
Yeah. Estoy aquí para hablarles sobre mi experiencia con World Relief.
I'm here to talk about my experience with World Relief.
Como ha sido mi evolución y agradezco primeramente a Dios, a este país y a esta ciudad por abrirnos las puertas y permitirnos la oportunidad de tener un nuevo hogar y hacernos sentir como en casa.
And I'm here to talk about my evolution. I want to thank World Relief and God for welcoming us to me and my children.
Como dije, llegué hace nueve meses con los mismos miedos, las mismas expectativas y las mismas preguntas que muchos de los refugiados que llegamos aquí.
Like I said, I arrived nine months ago with the same expectations and anxiety that many of the refugees bring.
El día de hoy voy a hablar para los refugiados. Quisiera que tomen las cosas con calma. Todo es un proceso y todo lleva su tiempo.
I want to talk to the refugees. I want to say to them to take everything with calm, that everything, everything takes time and everything takes effort.
Todos avanzamos de manera diferentes, algunos más rápidos que otros.
Everybody advances in a different rate, some fast and some not so fast.
Para aquellos que están recién llegados, mi consejo es salgan, conozcan, y relacionense con el entorno de su nuevo hogar.
My recommendation for all of you is to go out and get familiarized with the place that you're in and learn as much as you can.
Por mi parte, vuelvo a agradecer a World Relief por brindándonos la oportunidad y trabajar en nuestro caso y con mi familia.
Again, I want to thank World Relief for helping us and helping my family.
Para aquellos que recién llegan, quizás no tengan ahora el trabajo de sus sueños.
For those who first arrived, they don't have their dream job.
Pero estamos en un país donde todo es posible y lo sé por experiencia propia.
But we're in a country where everything is possible and I know that by my own experience.
Por ejemplo, tengo nueve meses y estoy trabajando felizmente en Amazon.
For example, I've been here for nine months and I'm really happy working in Amazon.
World Relief me ha dado la oportunidad también de obtener mi certificación como técnico profesional en uñas y mi licencia para ejercer.
World Relief has given me the opportunity to get my certification in, to manicurist?
Y ahora estoy trabajando en un proyecto personal como emprendedora. Estoy trabajando en hacer mi propio estudio de uñas, por lo cual esta ciudad me permitió ya tener mi registro y mi permiso para ejercer.
And right now I'm working in my own business and is to do like nails and I already have, thanks to this city, my certifications and also my permits to, to open my, my business.
Vuelvo y repito, no todo es tan rápido, pero gracias a Dios por ayudarme y en desperdizarme tan rápido y evolucionar en esta ciudad.
Like I said, everything takes time and I thank God for, you know, helping me be so independent.
La primera barrera para nosotros como refugiados e inmigrantes es el idioma.
The first barrier that we have as refugees and immigrants is our language barrier.
Pero World Relief nos ha brindado la oportunidad de aprenderlo.
But World Relief has given us the opportunity to learn.
En solo nueve meses he pasado del nivel uno al nivel cuatro.
In only nine months, I've gone from level one to level four.
Voy a ser en inglés. And yeah, yes, I know, it's so difficult, but no, impossible. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello and good evening, everyone. I'm very happy to be in this gathering. Like some of you may already know, my name is Abdul Wahid. Originally, I am from Kabul, Afghanistan. About almost 10 years ago, I moved from Kabul, Afghanistan to Spokane, Washington. I had, my refugee status was SIV, which means Special Immigration Visa. I had the privilege of working for US forces back in my country. That's why I received my SIV privileges. Moving from a third world country into a first world country like United States is very hard. When you get to a first world country like United States, whatever you see, your eyes cannot believe. It takes time and efforts to adopt to the new community and to the new country. When I came here, I was like a small, small child in a desert with no parents. Fortunately, there was World Relief for me to help me here. World Relief has given me everything to become a self-sufficient in this community. Whatever I have right now, it's because of the World Relief and their support. I'm very, very grateful for that. Fortunately, I am working as a case manager for World Relief and my job is to help the newcomers people, provide them life, life skills training, apply for their documentations, and help them become self-sufficient in this community. Yeah, and I would like to say thank you for World Relief and other resettlement agencies for supporting the immigration, the immigrants. And I believe, I believe people that they're coming from this different country to World Relief Spokane, they come up with new experiences and skills that we can use them as a human resources for this community. I believe together we can flourish this community. Thank you for World Relief and other resettlement agencies for supporting immigrations. And thank you for Spokane people for making Spokane a safe and peaceful community for the newcomers. Thank you.
Thank both of you. Whether you've been here 10 years or nine months, you belong and we are glad to have you part of our community. Ms. Fister, will you read the consent agenda?
Did you want to vote on it or did you want me to read the whole thing?
We want to take numbers one, two, five, and 17 separately. And then, commentary? We have a number of people who want to speak to the consent agenda. First is John Alder. Will Hewings and Justin Holler.
John Alder, I live in the District One. I'm speaking about 2024 spending on masks for the police. Well, I feel like there's already enough being spent on the police and we'll be needing cooling centers real soon here. I just feel that 98,000 would be better spent on cooling shelters instead of police masks. Thank you.
Will Hewings?
Good evening. My name is Will Hewings and I live downtown Spokane. First, I want to express my strong opposition to OPR 2024-0486, which proposes the purchase of two 2023 Ford Mach-E vehicles for the Spokane Fire Department's Community Assistance Response Team. And if people don't know who that is, I guess they're one of the guys that go out and when somebody's having a drug overdose and they go out and kind of try to save lives, which I'm all for. But I'm against this because obviously it's an electric vehicle. And I've already addressed this before with other departments. And it's kind of baffling, especially because we, you know, the city, we need all the money we can get, but you guys want to spend $108,000 on two Ford Maches. And I understand, because I talked to the guy that put this before today at the fire department. He told me that basically they're ordering these because it's basically mandated that they order them because of their, it's the city. And I find that kind of crazy because I, I also go to the valley council meetings and I, and I've actually talked to a couple of councilmen there. It's weird. They don't, they're not required to purchase electric vehicles for the valley. Why is it that here in the city of Spokane, you guys are all hard on pressed about getting these electric vehicles that serve no purpose? In February was like five degrees. Do you think them electric vehicles would have been out there operating properly? No. Instead, you could save a lot of money and purchase internal combustion engines or maybe even hybrids, which people wouldn't have a problem with. But these fully electric vehicles are a joke and the city shouldn't be wasting money on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Justin Holler? Is he online? Is Justin in the building?
Justin, if you're online, can you hit star three?
If not, we'll have Dennis Flynn.
Dennis, can you hit star three? All right, go ahead, Dennis. Whenever you're ready, you're unmuted.
Thanks, this is Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. I'd need 10 minutes minimum to address everything I'd like to discuss in this consent agenda. So I'll start in order of importance and see how far we get. First off, Jacoby, thank you for your professional interactions with me. You are appreciated. To the council, thank you for managing and passing OPR's for purchasing vests for the fire alarm, false alarm program for janitorial services, repairs and maintenance of heavy vehicles and other things required for running our city. In spite of my frequent criticisms, I appreciate your work to keep our city running. Regarding OPR 2023-0240 and the legal fees for defending against the wrongful death lawsuit, the body camera footage sure leaves me wanting more context to better understand the initial contact, the initial contact tactics used in order to come to an educated opinion on the shooting. But what is very concerning to me actually is that an allegation by a neighbor who may or may not be on the level on a Tuesday and a petition to the court for a temporary protection order on Wednesday resulted in a judge not only issuing the TPO but also ordering a firearm surrender one and a half days later on a Friday without even an ounce, as far as I'm aware of, of due process in an evidentiary hearing. Maybe there's missing context, such as possibly Mr. Bradley was a known dangerous individual or Mr. Scott has an unimpeachable character. However, if neither of those contexts are true, then Judge Maurer, sitting in a cozy office and chair, taking away a citizen's Second Amendment rights without so much as an evidentiary hearing to identify the truth of the situation as the root cause of this engagement in the first place. Again, context would be necessary to come to an educated opinion, but even in this left-leaning state, we should expect our judges to default to protecting our constitutional rights and not default to abridging them. Justified use of deadly force or not, Judge Maurer's immediate issuance of a questionable firearm surrender order directly resulted in a tragic death. And I hope the judge is very distressed. And I hope the judge is very distressed and is questioning if jumping into a surrender order was right course in lieu of this tragedy. Regarding OPR 2024-0439 and the grants we've been giving for our 2020 to 2025 City-County Strategic Plan to prevent and end homelessness, it is 2024, which means this is the last year to implement our plan to prevent and end homelessness by 2025. And are we going to meet those goals? Or could it possibly be that the real intent is to just perpetuate into infinity so that we have millions of dollars in grant money to use and all the dicktop strings come with it, of course? So when we come up with a new 2025 to 2030 plan, would you at least do us the courtesy of naming it something that resembles reality, like the strategic plan to spend more of your money and produce worse results? And if we partnered with and had the community address homelessness instead of strategic plan to prevent and end homelessness? OPR 2024-0486, purchasing two Mach-E vehicles for the Spokane Fire Department. I know that we're mandated to reduce our carbon emissions because otherwise we exacerbate the nebulous term climate change, which is a term that had to be created in the first place because when I was in grade school in the eighties, all the models showed that the then lowering of temperatures would continue and we were heading for an ice age. But then temperatures started rising and the model showed.
Thank you. You got a lot in. Thank you. Your time is up. Next is Joe Aeter and then Dream. Welcome, Joe.
All right. Thank you, council, for allowing us to speak today. I want to speak about the Housing and Human Services portion of the consent agenda. A couple of weeks ago, when I was here, we talked about Julia, who's a little girl in our shelter who could only write her name, really didn't have a voice to say anything else but her name. I asked you to think of her when you were thinking of funding for homeless services. My agency rehoused, either prevented or rehoused over 2,700 people last year. 1,400 of those were children. And so I just want to thank you in advance for your yes vote on funding for HHOS and continuing looking for resources to serve our most vulnerable populations, which are children that are experiencing homelessness in our community. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Joe. Dream? Welcome.
Good evening, City Council President and City Council. I'm here to talk about item 10 on the consent agenda. This is adding an additional $100,000 for legal counsel in the case of Bradley versus the city of Spokane. This is another case of an extrajudicial execution by the Spokane Police Department. We're now spending $250,000 just on the legal fees. There hasn't been a settlement yet. Just this year alone, we've had probably over $1 million of taxpayer money being spent on court proceedings and settlement payments for extrajudicial executions by the Spokane Police Department. And I'm wondering, what are we doing here? I've been up in front of this body, I can't even count how many times, talking to y'all about this issue. You know, we haven't had any audit of the massive police budget. We haven't had, we've had a little bit for the, you know, making the office of the police obudsman a little bit nicer. But I'm talking, we need to be doing things now. This is an emergency. If anything, in our city is an emergency. And I don't see any action from, any substantial action from this body at all. And we're wasting, again, over, probably over $1 million by this point, this year alone, of taxpayer money because the Spokane Police Department can't stop killing people.
Thank you, Dream. Thank you. We are now going to take item one on the consent agenda, the CHHS Board Recommendation. Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingo?
I guess I have a question to start off. I know that there was an appeal here on this one. Do we know where that's at in the process?
I only know that there was some formative appeal, whether it's recognized as valid or not, and whether it will be somehow resolved in the near future, I don't know. So we've got some vague information about that, so.
Jason, you want to come down and speak to this?
Glad to. Good evening, City Council President, council members. So yes, in regard to the HHOS funding, we did receive a protest letter on June 19th. Technically, that is outside of the protest period. Per SMC 0706155, it's two days after a notice of intent. We've got some opportunities to clean up our language to help make it easier for people to see what's going on. So with our processes, so out of the interest of that, we chose to review that letter. The letter itself did not have any citations to show where the city failed in any statutory or regulatory requirements, although there was no citations into there. Out of an abundance of caution, I reviewed with the CHHS director through all of the processes and data and could not find any evidence where we had misstepped in any, with regards to any statutory or regulatory process.
Could you restate the code?
Sure. 0706155.
Thank you.
Yeah. The language is a bit outdated. We do plan to make a request to amend the SMC. Most of the language focuses on public works. However, it is our protest policy.
Councilmember Navarrete?
I have a quick question. I understand that their letter was late because they were waiting for a response, how to proceed.
And with that in mind, that's why we reviewed the letter, even though it was late. So technically within two days, so that would have been, May 23rd, I believe, would have been the date, would have been the due date, since the original request to council was on May 21st. But again, understanding that we could have made that more clear to all of the applicants when that timeframe was, so.
So Jason, with the appeal process, will CHHS be working on having that standardized in the RFP itself?
We are currently working on that as we speak. So the CHHS director requested myself in legal to review current RFP language so that we can do a better job of clarifying where to look for for that process. So that's being included in current RFPs that are being drafted right now.
Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I've had concerns with this process from the beginning when we originally were going to open it up. You know, I suggested that if we're going to reopen it up, open it up to everybody, let everybody come in. It was told that we couldn't do that. We actually might have been able to do that. Timelines got murky. All kinds of things got murky. There might have been some ethical concerns in a number of things. And realistically, when it comes to our dollars, I mean, we're spending millions and millions and millions of dollars on homelessness. And for us to be moving forward in this space, we need to really transition out of funding based on inputs and transition to funding based on outcomes. And this is something that we've been working pretty hard on when it comes to the Regional Homes Authority. And I know that this body is supportive of that. And I hope that we continue to move forward with it. Thank you, councilmember Dylan and others for your support on that. But until I get a lot more clarity on what's happened in this process and make sure that the, that this, to me, seems to be the proper way to go, I'm going to be a no on this. And it's unfortunate how this one went down and I hope we learn from it and do better.
Councilmember Kacart?
Yeah, so a couple of things. Also, lots of questions around the process, what happened and why is a big question. And I know there have been some ethical concerns or conflict of interest concerns that I think I've been told the administration is still working through just to try to either identify or, you know, just fix whatever issues there might be there. But my big issue with this, at the end of the day, is the fact that out of this fund is 1.7 million of general fund money. And of those dollars, I mean, when we have a budget crisis, obviously, we have to be cutting and making really hard decisions. There's some, you know, big moving pieces probably being announced soon by the administration on some stuff. I mean, there's big decisions that have to be made. To me, this was the first decision that should have been made. And 1.7 million, we just cannot afford to spend $1.7 million without specific benchmarks, without specific ROI, without understanding exactly, you know, the benefits to the city. I, and I feel bad because I think that there are some really important projects, even within the general fund dollars, but could easily have fit under the other funding options. And in fact, I drafted an amendment to do just that, that I thought kind of prioritized some of the more important and tried to rearrange in a way that allowed us to cut the general fund dollars while, you know, again, prioritizing providers within those pass-through dollars. And my, you know, it's just really frustrating that we either need to make a decision that we are not going to spend those dollars because we have a budget crisis. We're committing them to three years. Our budget crisis is not going to, you know, resolve itself entirely this year. We still have very tough decisions to make in the outlying years. And so to continue to have this on our budget is something that's very frustrating. But frankly, in the other direction, what is actually more frustrating is the fact that with these dollars, we can do a whole heck of a lot of very good things, even relative to this spending, and we're not doing it. We're giving away the money. We could be mandating benchmarks. We could be mandating certain check-ins. We could be mandating that you're meeting certain standards and certain bench goals and things like that. We could be providing incentives to do more if you can reach out and help certain populations in a certain timeframe. There's a whole lot we could be doing to actually experiment with what works and what doesn't. So if we're going to spend 1.7 million in the middle of a budget crisis, I kind of think we should do it in a smart way. And I just don't think this is it. We don't have any of those metrics. And so I just, I cannot, for all of the myriad of questions, for all of the noes from legal on any sort of amendments to this thing, being locked in to the fact that we were told four months ago that essentially we were going to go back out and it was going to be sort of this exclusionary process that didn't allow all applicants to apply. And again, it's just not right, didn't make sense. And in retrospect, we now know we didn't have to do that. So I just, for all of those reasons, I'm going to be a no on this. I really do hope that we truly correct the language in there, both in terms of the process upfront as well as on the back end with the appeals. Just to make it extremely clear for folks, because I think there's just, there's not a lot of clarity there. So I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Navarrete?
Thank you. So I initially proposed an amendment that would change from one-year contract, or from three to one-year contract. And also for us to be able to maybe just through the research and see what organization was doing the job and who wasn't. So, you know, we could see who would be eligible for money next time they applied. I did end up withdrawing my amendment for several reasons. I also note that there are going to be changes in the horizon. We might go into a biannual budget, so the yearly would be more beneficial for us. I also feel, writing my previous amendment, that the entire HHOS process was a bit shaky and there were uncertainties that weren't addressed. And even when I asked them second time, they really weren't still addressed. And I understand that the security of funding for a longer period of time is very valuable for service providers. I just hope that we as council and the administration stick to our commitment of yearly performance reviews to make sure that the money is being spent responsibly and effectively.
Councilmember Klitschke?
I share a lot of the concerns that were raised today about the process. But I think once something has already gone out to RFP, it's a little bit too late to litigate that process on our side. And so I think moving forward, we need to commit to working with the administration, to reforming this process into something that is clear, that is transparent, and that is fair. And so I will be supporting this today, but I do think that we need to work together and come up with some reforms that work best for our community and our council.
Any other council commentary? I will be supporting this as well. It wasn't the provider's fault that this got processed. This was our own internal process. And so we were actually penalizing the very people that are out there helping our most vulnerable. So with that, we're going to do a voice vote for this. All those in favor of item number one on the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Noes?
No.
Abstentions? That passes. Four to three. We are going to go ahead, I'm going to take the ones that we are contesting, Ms. Fister, first. So we're going to go to number two. And that's the purchase of the Ford Mach-Es. Council commentary on that?
No commentary.
All those in favor of item number two for the purchase of the Mach-Es for the fire department, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Noes?
No.
Abstentions? That passes. Item number five, which is the contract extension with the Central Square for administration of the false alarm program. Any council commentary on that one? Councilmember Kacart?
Yeah, I will just say, I have voted against this a couple of times. Just the way the program operates has some concerns. There's some crime victims who end up getting charged and I just don't like that. They are revamping it, so I do look forward to that and I hope that the new version will be a lot better. This is a short contract, but I'll be voting against it tonight.
No other commentary? All those in?
Sorry, Council President.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I share the concerns councilmember Kacart has. You know, we've been contacted by numerous businesses in District One and residents about how, why am I getting this bill, what is going on? And I've seen some growth out of this program and I'm hoping that there's a little bit more, so I'll be supporting. But keeping a close eye on it because, you know, again, as councilmember Kacart indicated, some victims of crimes have been charged for this and we'll work through that.
Councilmember Dylan?
I appreciate a lot of the ongoing kind of modifications of this. I once got a false alarm ticket for cooking a steak in a cast iron that was emitting too much smoke while I turned my back momentarily. So happy to see those days are over and we're updating this.
Hearing no other commentary, all those in favor of item number five, the contract extension with Central Square, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you. On to number 17, was asked to be taken separately. This is an amendment to the Washington State Department of Commerce Housing Division for homeless accepting a grant of $9,100,000. Council commentary on this? All those in favor of number seven, all those in favor of number 17, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Now, back to the rest of the consent agenda. Hearing no other need for discussion, all those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, other than the ones we discussed already, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? The consent agenda is passed. Thank you. On to the special budget ordinance. Oh, need a hearing? Oh, thank you, Mr. Paco. He is going to come to us and present the hearing on the 2025 30 six-year comprehensive street program. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Council President and council members, presenting on item H1 on the agenda. Wait for Jacoby to bring that up.
Kevin, you have a clicker down there?
Yep. So presenting, ooh, touchy. Presenting on our annual update to our six-year street program for 2025 to 2030. And I'm Kevin Paco from Integrated Capital Management. The requested action today is council adoption of the update to the six-year program. Listen here, our schedule and various touchpoints we've had, not only with city council, but with plan commission as well as PCTS. Getting into the kind of the role of the program, something I always lead off with each year is kind of summarizes it. Our six-year street program is our mechanism or our tool to implement and, implement and address, excuse me, the goals and objectives in Chapter Four, Transportation of the Comprehensive Plan. Once projects are included in the six-year program, we can identify funding. Once projects are fully funded, we can move forward with design and implementation during construction. One key point to make on our street program is by state law, we have to have an adopted updated program prior to July 1st of each year. So the six-year street portion of the program follows a different timeline and schedule than the citywide CIP program that follows later in the year. This is a list of completed projects. Won't mention them individually, but all of these projects are either complete or are under construction as we speak. And we expect them to be complete this year, so they don't need to carry forward with the next update to the program into 2025. In terms of some project updates, these projects listed here are all projects that are already in the six-year program. But in the last year, we received funding through grant applications and grant awards on each of these projects that will allow these projects to move forward with design and construction. That will allow these projects to move forward with design and construction. We'll see design and planning and design in later this year and into 2025 on most of these projects. Most of them will be constructed in 2026. Now moving into the real focus, which is the new projects going into the program this year, is nine new projects in summary. Seven of those were a result of new grant awards that we received in the last year. This is a list of those projects. These are all the grant-funded projects. I'll go individually into a little more detail on each. These two to three projects are the locally funded projects, and I'll expand on that last category I mentioned there, what we're calling an honorable mention project. This is our reconciliation sheet. It's been included in previous briefing papers. Hard to read on this screen, obviously, but it provides more detail in terms of project description on each of those projects. This map is an overview or summary of all the new projects going into the program. New projects are highlighted in red. The large pink area in the middle of the map is related to the Safe Streets for Spokane Project, which I'll summarize here in a second, which is a collection of several projects within that boundary. So just moving into that project, and I'm sorry, the kind of title's being cut off on the screen here a little bit, but this is the Safe Streets for Spokane Project, is what we're calling it. It is a result of a successful grant award through the federal Safe Streets for All Program. It's a $12 million total project cost. We received $9.6 million in that grant award. This project is really a collection, again, of several projects. The projects highlighted in blue there on the map is roughly 13 projects. I characterize those as more moderate-sized projects, some bike lane improvements, some sidewalk infill, some stairwell replacements. And then in addition to those projects, there is a lengthy series of systemic improvements that include bike and ped crossing improvements, cross rock enhancements, traffic signal timing improvements, including what's referred to as leading pedestrian interval, which is a pedestrian enhancement or pedestrian safety improvement at signalized intersections. Moving on, the next project is what we refer to as Bridge Deck Preservation Bundle. This project is a collection of four different bridges, three along the Freya and Green Street corridor, and then the one Havana Street Bridge. This work is very similar to the work we completed last fall on the Maple Street Bridge for that Bridge Deck Preservation and Rehabilitation. 4.7 million total project cost. It's 100% grant-funded, and there's no local match required on this project. These projects will likely occur in 2026. Moving on, Wellesley Avenue Chip Seal Project is a fairly simple, straightforward project, just chip seal preservation maintenance, was also a result of grant award in this past year from SRTC through their preservation program, a little over half million dollars, again on Wellesley Avenue from Maple to Division. Next project, also a result of a grant award through the SRTC Preservation Program. As for the Washington Stevens Corridor south of Third Avenue, this is grind and overlay work, about $2 million total project cost, million and a half in grant funding. Next project, also through that SRTC Preservation Program, also grind and overlay, this one on Third Avenue from Enrode Division, about $1.7 million, a little over a million in grant dollars. Two additional grind and overlay grant awards, these next two projects here. So this first one is a combination of two corridors on Third Avenue and Stevens Street, little bit larger project, close to $4 million, a little over $3 million in grant funding. This is through a program administered by WashDOT, but it's federal dollars. Again, received a little over $3 million on this one. And from that same program, we also received funding for these two projects that are bundled together, Sprague Avenue as well as Alki Broadway, both from Freya to Havana, again grind and overlay work, roughly $3.8 million total cost, a little over $3 million in grant dollars. I'll just highlight this particular project of these four grind and overlays I just mentioned. This will be our highest priority in terms of pushing it out for construction, given the NSC construction in this general area. We're trying to beat kind of that next wave of NSC construction that'll occur at I-90, try to get this work complete before the NSC construction work near I-90 starts around Moving on, the next project is not grant-funded. We've got a couple of locally funded projects. This Grandview 16th, 17th is kind of a unique project, is a result of a developer agreement from well over a decade ago through a property purchase. Nearby developer was required to either extend and realign Grandview, as shown there in red, or contribute a certain amount to the construction of that improvement. That agreement has lingered. The development hasn't moved forward. Developer chose to make the financial contribution rather than construct the roadway here recently. Now that they've made that contribution, now we're obligated to move forward and actually build the project. So it's roughly $900,000. That's just in the street side of the cost. There'll be some utility work that occurs as well, and the developer contribution was about $250,000, looking at construction in 2026. Next project, Rockwood Boulevard, Grand to Cali. This originally started as just a traditional grind and overlay maintenance project that we had planned within the city. Through our initial investigations and work with our water department, there were some concerns on the water lines through a portion of this corridor, and we're going to upgrade those water lines now. Now it's become an integrated project and been elevated to a full capital project. But again, the street work includes grind and overlay of those limits of work, again looking at 2026 construction for this project as well. And then finally, what we're referring to as honorable mention project, many of you are aware, we have a program called the TBD Sidewalk Program. The Transportation Benefit District does the car tab dollars that does allocate a portion of those funds for sidewalk infill work. That program is listed programmatically within the CIP, and it includes a list of potential future locations. This was one of those locations. It's been in the program for years. Now that we're going to move forward with it and fund that specific project, we're pulling it out of that programmatic listing and establishing it as its own project within our program. But again, isn't truly new because it's already been listed previously in the program. And then summary in terms of some of the costs, completed projects coming out of the program were roughly $13 million. New projects going into the program, over $31 million. And then additional information is available. The complete program is available on our website, on our ICM page, and there's a direct link there as well. And with that, I'll turn it back over to council.
Thank you. Kevin, could you just, you use the acronym SRTC several times. Could you just give a quick explanation of that and how that kind of played into the processes that might, just quickly?
Sure, yeah, sorry, we use lots of acronyms. So SRTC is the Spokane Regional Transportation Council that kind of, you know, governs our area as it relates to allocation of federal funding that comes down through the region. Those are, they administer those grant dollars, the competitive processes that we apply to them for grant dollars on various projects.
We've been very successful, thank you. Councilmember Bingo.
I, sorry, this is a random question that popped in my mind. So the pedestrian bridge that was taken down over I-90, do we know that replacement date? Is it getting replaced?
That'll be replaced in kind, not necessarily at that location, but in general as part of the NSC work. It's, that location was going to have to be replaced anyhow. It wasn't going to, you know, survive the rest of the construction that was existing there. So yeah, there, WashDOT is going through that process to nail down the specific location. It won't be at Magnolia, it'll probably be a couple blocks east. But related to that, what we did do on WashDOT's behalf, they refunded us, what we did do is improve the sidewalks and the ADA ramps for the alternative route, or bypass, if you will, along Fourth Avenue, Pacific, Altamont, Perry, and that work is essentially complete. We wrapped it into our annual ADA ramp program. And, you know, there's some, still some punch lists and finishing touches, but the work is effectively complete now.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kat Cart.
Thank you for all the work that you do on this and the inclusion of the sidewalks there in Hilliard, as the honorable mentioned. I think that's great to get that project done, and I know there's some folks that were pushing hard on that, so that's great. Thank you.
All right. Before us, need a motion to approve.
We have one.
We have one commentary, Justin Holler? Are you online?
Justin, once again, if you're online, can you hit star three?
Okay, he's not online. Entertained a motion to approve?
This is a roll call vote.
There's a hand. Justin, go ahead, you're unmuted.
Yeah, which one was this about again?
This is on the six-year street plan.
Do we have to do a grind and overlay every time? Can't we just build a proper road to begin with? That way you don't have to keep redoing it? That would be awesome. That's all I got.
Thank you, Justin. Councilmember Kat Cart and Councilmember Bingo.
Oh, yeah, just wondering, do we need to close the hearing or do we just need a motion to adopt?
I don't know the answer to that, to be honest.
What do you need from us?
I would do a motion to close, just to be safe.
Before we do, there is a reason why we do the grinds and overlays as a maintenance versus a rebuild. Could you quickly just share the difference there and why we do these?
Well, in general, it's substantially cheaper, you know, order of magnitude factor of eight to 10. And in general, even properly built streets, they still periodically, asphalt street, still periodically needs a grind and overlay, and that preserves the overall structural
Sorry, one last quick question on this. Can you talk about the ways that it's actually beneficial to taxpayers to maintain these roads like this versus letting them get to a certain condition where we have to rebuild? Can you?
Sure. To my earlier point on that delta in the cost, if we don't maintain them and just let them continue to deteriorate, even if it was originally properly built, that underlying base becomes damaged or ruined, if you will, and now we have to do much more costly maintenance or rehabilitation later, so.
Councilmember Kat Cart, then Councilmember Dillon. No?
I was going to make a motion, so.
I'll entertain the motion.
I move to close the hearing.
It's been moved in second to close the hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? That's done, thank you, Ms. Pacanso.
And then I move to adopt...
The recommendation?
Yeah, I move to adopt the recommendation for the six-year street plan.
Second? Been moved in second to adopt the resolution. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
This is a resolution, so we usually do a roll call vote.
Okay. Let's do a roll call vote. Thank you, Ms. Fister. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pacanso. All right. Back to the other special budget ordinance. Ms. Fister.
Ordinance C-36529, amending ordinance number C-364627, passed by the City Council November 27, 2023, and entitled an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2024, making appropriations the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declaring an emergency in appropriating funds in. Housing Sales Tax Fund, number one, increased appropriation by $2,581,320. A of the increased appropriation, $2,581,320 is provided solely for contractual services. This action arising from the Haifumi apartment project.
We have a couple of commentary.
John Alder, living District One. This is about the Housing Sales Tax Fund. We already have a serious shortage of housing for senior citizens and fixed income folks. Many are in homeless shelters lacking the Medicare they need. By 2040, 25% of our state will be 65 or older. I hope when you use these funds, you'll give them first priority. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next is Justin Holler.
Go ahead, Justin, whenever you're ready. Go ahead, Justin, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I don't know why we have to allocate these funds. 2.5 million is a lot. You know, if you're 50 million over budget, maybe you need to tighten up and do with less like the rest of us have had to over the last three or four years. That's it.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Thank you.
Ordinance C-36530, miscellaneous grants fund, number one, increased revenue by $405,000. A of the increased revenue, $405,000 is provided solely for grant revenue from the STA's Federal Transit Administration's Pilot Program for Transit-Oriented Development Planning Grant in the Planning Services Department. Number two, increased appropriation by $405,000. A of the increased appropriation, $405,000 is provided solely for contractual services. This action arises from the Spokane Transit Authority's Grant Award for Transit-Oriented Development Planning.
One public testimony, Justin Holler.
Go ahead, Justin.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yeah, if you're already proposing $200 million for STA, why give them another portion of money? You're 50 million over budget, stop wasting money. The STA is overfunded with tax dollars already. They don't need any more money. They're heavily subsidized, and I don't know why District One can't get any representation from the STA. The Valley has representation, but somehow there's four people from Spokane City Council on the Board of Directors of the STA, but no one from District One. How is that taxation with representation? It sounds like taxation without representation. District One needs to have a dog in the fight, and we need to be represented. We're not represented, Betsy. It's disgusting and deplorable. We need to have representation in District One. That's it.
Thank you, Justin. Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingo.
Yeah, I totally agree with, obviously, us not being represented on STA, you know, four of us and not one from District One. But in clarity, this is not $405,000 from the general fund that we're spending on this. This is a grant that we're receiving. This $405,000 is going out, so this is not something that's going to affect the bottom line of the general fund.
Any other council commentary? Thank you.
Emergency ordinance C-36531 relating to the establishment of a two-year biannual budget beginning January 1, 2025, in accordance with Chapter 35.34 RCW, amending the title to Chapter 7.01 of the Spokane Municipal Code, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 7.01.010, adopting new Section 7.01.020 and 7.01.030 to Chapter 7.01 of the Spokane Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
We have two public comments.
Go ahead, Dennis, you're unmuted.
Hi, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. I know there's a six-month in advance requirement in the RCW, and regardless of that six-month in advance requirement, the wording in the RCW says, quote, well, says you, quote, "may", end quote, change to a biannual budget. So I'm not sure how the word "may" makes this eligible for an emergency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know what the advantage is here.
Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, I don't know what the advantage here is. Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know what the advantage here is for a biannual budget. You know, you screwed off countless amounts of money so far, wasting money on homeless projects, and I don't know where the parks and rec and library budget is, but I don't see a bunch of people benefiting. So maybe tighten up your budget instead of trying to play games as far as when you're going to do the budget, just tighten up the budget. It doesn't matter how often you do the budget, just tighten it up. If you're overspending, stop taking out new credit cards. That's what normal people do. But you guys are like, oh, we'll just tax more people. You know, it doesn't matter how often you do the budget, stop wasting our money. That's it.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Councilmember Kat Cart.
Yeah, so we are right now in the middle of a mid-year review of our budget, and we'll be voting on those recommendations, I believe, July 8. But that process began two years ago, and it... But that process began two years ago, and it originated actually as a biennial budget effort for the administration. Unfortunately, we couldn't get buy-in from the administration, and it's impossible to do this sort of thing without that buy-in. And so we, we sort of pivoted into that mid-year review, which, you know, principally helped us to accomplish, I think, some similar things in a shorter time scale. The problem is that the, and the reason why I so strongly believe in a biennial budget process is that we need to start thinking long-term. We have to start thinking sustainably, and we need to make sure that our program costs and departmental costs and things are sustainable over a longer horizon than just a single year. And so it's, it's harder to sort of play games, to, to move money around, to sweep funds, to delay things when you have to, to balance over multiple years. And so I think it's really a very important move. I think it's the right recipe. This on its own isn't gonna solve anything. You still have to be, you know, fiscally conservative and responsible and thinking things through and planning. But I think it's a device that really helps us to, forces us to consider the ramifications of all of our decisions as we put that budget together. So I'm, I'm really happy that, that this is coming forward. I, I do wish it had been a little bit more collaborative in terms of the, the moving this forward. But regardless, I'm glad it's here. I'm glad that I hopefully will be passing tonight and that we will be, you know, essentially stepping into a two-year budget for the first time as we, you know, move forward in this process. So I'm really glad to see that. Again, I support the concept. I support this ordinance. I think it's the right recipe, and I encourage everybody to vote yes.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Bingo.
Yeah, I think, I, I do wanna thank Councilmember Cathcart. He's been working on this for, for some time. Council President Wilkerson, I know, has been supportive. And it is, you know, now that we have Mayor Brown, also with her experience in the state, saw the benefit of the two-year or the biennial budget. And so it was a nice, it was nice that the, the administration had bought in. But we're here now. I actually will be opposing this tonight, even though I like the biennial budget, because one of the things we just worked so hard on was how do we not have emergency ordinances that aren't emergencies? To me, this emergency ordinance is something where, had we had it in, in time, it could have gone through the proper channels, it could have gone through the proper process, and still been passed in time. Unfortunately, we didn't have it in time, and so now we have to pass it as an emergency. Otherwise, we won't, we won't be within our deadline. And so for me, I'll be opposing tonight, not because, not based on its merits, but I, are you all aware that I hate emergency ordinances that I think are unnecessary? So I'm opposing.
No other commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2024-53, referred to as Janet Mann, Safe Streets Now, and requesting the mayor to direct the Public Works Department to implement adaptive design strategies for transportation infrastructure within the city of Spokane to be paid through the Traffic Calming Measures Fund, referred from June 3, 2024 Agenda.
We have several public comments. First is Eric Low, and then Rick Bochuk.
Good evening. My name is Eric Low, and I'm a stay-at-home dad residing in Spokane Valley. I'm here today, tonight, with other members of Spokane Reimagined to speak in favor of the Safe Streets Now resolution. In 2023, Washington set an all-time record for pedestrian fatalities with 157. 11 of those fatalities occurred within Spokane. There have already been five pedestrian fatalities this year. This council has thankfully recognized the crisis at hand and is taking action. We applaud this council for your work to protect all Spokane residents and visitors. We implore you to go bolder. Open more streets to people and bring joy and excitement to downtown streets. Temporary infrastructure allows the city to study and design permanent solutions in real time. Take advantage of that opportunity. Ensure the city hires people with the vision and capability to implement adaptive traffic measures quickly and effectively. Most importantly, and what we applaud this council for establishing, is the need for quick and decisive action to make our streets safe for everyone. The deliverables listed in this resolution are exactly the kinds of inexpensive and effective measures that have been implemented globally to great success. Spokane has the opportunity to quickly remake our streets to be safer, quieter, and more vibrant. It is imperative that this council hold Mayor Brown and all levels of her administration accountable when following the directives of this resolution. Thank you for this resolution and what it represents. Now, please ensure that the city act with the urgency that this crisis deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Bochuk, Bochuk, and then Will Hewlings.
Well, it's sad about the passing of the lady that got hit over there by, where Center for Justice was, that area there. I think that they should do the traffic calming all the way down to the library myself. But I don't think the mall would like that. But I think they should just bypass the mall and not worry about them, since they take all the money from the parking meters, anyway. And I hope that debt gets paid off eventually. But I just think it's a great idea to do the traffic. Many times I've come across people coming really fast downtown. It's garbage. They just need to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Will Hewlings, and then Ben Hargreaves.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown. I strongly oppose Resolution 2024-0053, also known as Safe Streets Now, which was proposed by Zepone and Klitschke. This resolution requests the mayor to direct the Public Works Department to implement adaptive design strategies for transportation infrastructure within the city of Spokane. While the proponents argue that traffic deaths in Washington State have reached a 33-year-high with a 10% increase in the last year, an advocate for adaptive designs, and they, they wanna advance adaptive designs as a solution, I find there are several issues with that. First, adaptive design strategies, as described, seem like temporary fixes that may not effectively address the root causes of traffic safety concerns. They may provide quick and low-cost solutions, but are they sustainable in the long term? Are they truly effective in mitigating risks and improving safety? While examining examples like Seattle's Right-of-Way Improvement Manual, which serves as a reference for this resolution, many of the proposed ideas appear flashy but potentially unnecessary. One of the things I have a problem with is this traffic calming stuff. As far as I know, that rainbow crosswalk that's become quite divisive is part of traffic calming. So it seems to me that Councilman Zepone and, you know, they, they believe that they can paint the streets and make them safe some way, which I don't believe is the case. But anyways, like I said, I strongly oppose this. I mean, I like safe streets. I live downtown. And Janet Mann, rest in peace. I actually know her, a very nice lady. I actually live in her building. And I do hope you do something about the streets, 'cause people shouldn't be getting ran over on their lunchtime. That's something I worry about every day living in the city.
Thank you, Will. Next, we have Dream, and then Sarah Rose.
Good evening, once again, council president, city council. I'm speaking in support of this resolution. I wanna thank Councilmembers Zepone for meeting with members of Spokane Reimagined and taking the time to stretch out the timeline of this resolution to, to get some specific stuff in there. I share some sentiments about a lot of these things not, not doing enough to actually make our streets safer, but I also acknowledge that these are changes we can make right now, and that the changes that we can make right now means that our streets are gonna be safer right now and that we can do them without having to take the, the time to study how a permanent infrastructure change will, will affect things and go through all of the, the, the myriad bureaucratic checks that this city has to. I was emailing a city engineer about a possibility of doing something in, in my neighborhood, and he didn't really seem to understand. The point of the Safe Streets Resolution Now resolution is to do things that you can change easily, and was talking to me about how, well, there's all these plans that, that are going to be implemented eventually. When, what we're talking about is we need to do things right now. And these things that we can do right now, if they work, we can move forward when we're, when we're in a little bit of a better financial situation, which this is gonna help with, because when you get people out of their cars and you get people walking around and you get people on their bicycles, that slows the rate of degradation for our streets. And street maintenance is one of the, the biggest drains on our, our city budget. So as far as I'm concerned, this is, this is really good, and that's, and then, when we find that if these projects work really well, then we can work towards transforming them into more protective, more permanent infrastructure. And if, for some reason, it doesn't work, for whatever particular project it is, then the advantage of temporary changes is that we can take them away. So I wanna thank the council for, you know, bringing forward this resolution and encourage y'all to pass it, and encourage you to keep going. Like Eric was mentioning, we can do more. I wanna encourage y'all to reach out to neighborhood councils and, and look for projects in your districts. And in addition to the ones that are gonna be done under this resolution, if they work, bring another one forward. Do Streets, Safe Streets Now 2.0, 3.0. Keep doing it. We can change this city. And the city doesn't own very much land, but it owns the right-of-way on all the streets. And so we don't have to work and spend a bunch of taxpayer money on land acquisition to do this. And that is something that was one of the most expensive parts of, of making changes. So I wanna thank this council for bringing this resolution forward, encourage y'all to pass it, and encourage you to keep going. Thank you.
Excuse me, Sarah, if you wait a minute, I jumped over Ben. Thank you, Dream. Ben, please come down. Welcome.
Thank you for having tonight. My name is Ben Hargreaves. I'm working with Spokane Reimagined. I live on, I've lived in Spokane all my life. I currently live on 33rd and Grand. Spokane is leading this nation on the topic of housing reform. I applaud you for that. I appreciate all you, the work you do for that. It means someday I'll be able to live in the city that I love. Density is better for the environment. It's cheaper. It creates more revenue for the city. But the benefits for individuals don't come until you start creating spaces that are, for them, that are livable. I live in one of the most walkable neighborhoods in the city. I'm a 10-minute walk away from a grocery store, two schools, athletic fields, restaurants, pubs, and a coffee shop. But every time I walk down Grand to get to these businesses, it feels like I'm walking on a tightrope. Cars routinely speed, ignore stop signs, don't look for pedestrians when they take turns on red. Cyclists can't use that road without being yelled at and threatened by drivers. It's happened to me many times. Spokane Reimagined spent time at 32nd and Grand, which is a crosswalk for Sacagawea, filming the start of a middle school day and found multiple examples of middle schoolers, you know, 12- to 14-year-olds, almost being hit by cars. It happens pretty consistently. We have examples of simple fixes for that. You know, I'd love to see a raised crosswalk, like the one on Lincoln and, ooh, Riverfront, just down here, just out by the library. But currently, these quick fixes kind of elude the city. They have to be part of a bigger plan. I was in Comstock Neighborhood Council last week, and they showed me a plan they had created for speed bumps on 37th. They wanted to use, you know, temporary speed bumps. But after traffic engineering, it turned from a $50,000 plan into a $700,000 plan and was probably rightfully so struck down by the council, because that's a lot to spend in the current moment. With the highest road death total in Washington last year, it's time to make these quick temporary fixes. We can see which ones work, we can see which ones don't work, and we can make the ones that work permanent and keep working towards a safer Spokane for pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Sarah?
Hello. My name is Sarah Rose from Spokane. I and many others in this room are here to support this resolution for Safe Streets Now. A single death due to our transportation, either as a city or as individuals, should be mourned, should be taken seriously, and should be assessed and investigated to prevent a following loss. Two weeks ago tomorrow, Spokane lost an incredible vibrant member of our community on Main Avenue and Brown Street. This person was a wife, a mother, a grandmother, and a true asset to Spokane. I would like to use part of my testimony time now and invite everyone to share a moment of silence for Janet Mann. Thank you. I would now like to take a moment for the other four pedestrians that have been hit and killed this year in Spokane. The 11 lives we lost in our communities last year in 2023, and the countless lives lost and affected by traffic violence here in Spokane. The year is 2024. We have access to more research and technology than ever before, yet it seems our society has accepted regular violent crashes as part of everyday life here. What's being proposed tonight isn't expensive technology. It's not groundbreaking. It's using tested and proven measures other cities have seen great success with in implementing them as quickly as we can here in Spokane. I'm hoping this resolution gives the city and neighborhoods the power to transform their own streets and make them safer, more livable places. I'm particularly excited about the Adaptive Designs Manual mentioned and how this could be used to expedite simple infrastructure at the neighborhood level. The urgency of this crisis cannot be understated. Thank you all for working together to put this resolution forward in a timely manner. I look forward to seeing positive changes in Spokane, thanks to all of your collaboration.
Thank you. Next, we have Rachel Young, and then Lauren Panborn.
Thank you. I have lived in Spokane for almost 20 years. My, I, my primary transportation modality is car. I work downtown, and I am not part of Spokane Reimagined, but I am enthusiastically in support of the Safer Street Resolution. We are somewhere between 80 and 90 years into prioritizing car, cars as a mode of transportation over, over any kind of mass transportation over pedestrians. And we, we see this in how our city is laid out. We see this in sprawl, and we see this in pedestrian safety or lack of safety and, and lack of bicycle safety. I was fortunate enough to visit London, England, earlier this year, and I think it's a city of about 10 million right now. I can tell you, I felt safer as a pedestrian in urban London in the Hackney District than I do walking around downtown Spokane. Some of the, some of the pedestrian safety measures that I saw in London included raised, raised crosswalks, where cars had to come up to sidewalk level, and it was a signal to them that they were entering new territory and that they needed to respond accordingly. Ballards around sidewalk corners at intersections to keep cars and trucks from, you know, cutting the corner and running over the intersection. I don't know the right term for it, but I call them dog legs. I believe that any time I had to walk across a London road that was more than three lanes, where there was a crosswalk, there was a pedestrian refuge in the middle, you know, raised on concrete or protected with railings. And I recognize that all of the things I'm talking about are more expensive than some of the lower-cost initiatives being discussed. But even things like marked crosswalks or specially painted crosswalks are a visual cue to drivers that they're entering new territory, that they're entering a territory where they are not the only, the only mode of transportation, the only thing on the road, and that they should pay attention to it. So I, I asked the council to support this resolution and, as Dream so eloquently stated, and Sarah did, to start with what we have now and build on it so we can build a safer city for pedestrians and bicyclists. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Lauren?
Good evening, council president, council members. In urban design, there is a concept of
In urban design, there is a concept of induced demand, which means that if you build something nice, people will use it. In other words, if you build it, they will come. With motor vehicle infrastructure, induced demand spells doom. A road widened out of lane will actually have worse traffic delays within a couple of years due to more folks driving on it. With bike infrastructure and pedestrian infrastructure, on the other hand, induced demand is truly wonderful. Replacing car trips with bike trips and walking trips means less air, water, and sound pollution in our community. And bikes cause orders of magnitude less wear and tear on our expensive infrastructure. And how do we induce demand? By making it safe to ride. A 2015 study found that 51% of people in metro areas are interested in using cycling as a mode of transport, but they don't because they're concerned about safety. There's a phrase used by those interested in cycling safety, "Paint isn't infrastructure." Only the very confident cyclists, an estimated 12%, will use paint-only bike lanes. To reach the 51% of interested but concerned users, we need protected infrastructure and we need it now. We cannot afford to wait. Additionally, it has been shown that streets made safer for cyclists and pedestrians actually make the streets safer for everyone, motorists included. In a time when deaths on our roads are increasing, as we all know, cycling infrastructure is good for everyone. So please vote yes on this resolution. Let's quickly build some protected bike infrastructure. Let's induce some demand. Let's test out our designs so we know what we can build permanently later. I think you'll see folks flocking to it, which benefits us all. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Justin Holler and after that, Dennis Flynn.
Justin, go ahead. You're unmuted.
Yeah, according to Range Media, I'm not allowed to have an opinion on this, and they always use ad hominem's instead of a real argument. That being said, if more people just start to ride a bike, maybe, just maybe, we wouldn't have to worry about all this infrastructure nonsense. So few people are willing to ride a bike less than a mile to a store. So few people are willing to walk less than a mile to a store. It's just, it's a waste of money. People who want to ride a bike are going to ride a bike. People who don't want to ride, you don't need to build bike lanes for them. The few people that are scared to ride a bike because there's no protected bike lanes, it's a nonstarter. Add up all the people that don't ride bikes, that complain about bike lanes. You know me. I show up to the city council on a bike. It's about a 4.5-mile commute down to City Hall. You know, it's just astounding how few people will even ride their bike to City Hall or to any of these other meetings. And then they cry, "Oh, we need bike lanes, we need bike lanes." Well, who's riding the bikes? I don't see anyone riding bikes. Nobody rode the bike to the meeting where Kitty and Zach showed up except for me. And that was a little bit, about as far as City Hall. So it's just, it's a complete waste of money. And nobody rides bikes already, so, and you're not clearing the bike lanes that already exist. So why build more infrastructure for people who don't even ride? It's just a waste of money. Thanks.
Thank you, Justin.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Hi, this is Dennis. I live near St. Charles regarding the Safe Streets Now. You know, I understand there's a decision here as to what is a known permanent need and what is a proposed but not proven need. And I am totally in favor of using less costly temporary means in the situation of proposed but not proving, which gives you time to reassess and replace when the lifecycle is complete before putting in a long-term solution that comes with ongoing maintenance costs. So I would like, for example, I'd be opposed to wasting dollars on a temporary solution in a location where we know needs a permanent solution, like the bike infrastructure lanes. It's not a temporary need. That's a permanent solution. I would be opposed to moving funds to the Safe Streets Now for a temporary solution for something that we know needs a permanent solution. Bicycle's getting yelled at. I mean, same rules mean staying in line if there's not a bike lane as well as riding in the direction of traffic, not skipping forward on the right just because you can or cycling in the opposite direction of traffic. And, you know, when people think, people just need to drive less, use public transportation more, I support your thinking that way, just like I support the parent trying to get two kids to two separate places across town and possibly at the same time thinking that's nontenable for their situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Council Commenter?
Yeah, Council President, I actually had a couple slides to explain it because I'm not sure the full public knows what adaptive design is. It's kind of a new concept. So if Jacoby could pull that up. And really, this ordinance is, or this resolution came around from hearing from community members for a long time about the need for improvements for traffic safety and making our streets better for pedestrians, cyclists, and all users. And I know that council members up here have worked on this for a long time with the Safe Streets Ordinance. And so this is not a new idea, but there has been frustrations. We hear them at neighborhood council meetings all the time, that projects are not being built fast enough. And so this is really looking at how can we build more things faster and then come back and make them more permanent over time. And so if you could go over. Thanks, Councilmember Dylan, if he wants to speak to the name change for why it's now the Janet Mann Safe Streets Now ordinance.
Yeah, I'll just read this for folks at home. Whereas Janet Mann was an author, former director of a local foster parenting program and revitalized the Rid Path Apartments along with her husband, and whereas on June 11th was struck and killed in a hit-and-run while crossing the streets at the intersection of Brown Street and Main Ave at the city of Spokane.
Thank you. So we go, Janet Mann was one of many people, as we heard earlier, that have died recently on our streets here in Spokane. We look, since 2015, 51 people were killed in Spokane alone, not in the county, but in Spokane, the city. And many others were seriously injured. Go to the next slide. If you look at just what the impact is, if you have increased speeds, it can double the chance of a pedestrian fatality of about 10 miles per hour. Go to the next one. So what are safe streets? It's just making it safe for everyone, and this is about doing it quicker and cheaply to address the need. So adaptive design strategies are specifically quick, low-cost solutions to, for reallocating street space. They're used to slow vehicles and separate and protect vulnerable pedestrians and vehicles. They can be moved and changed, too. If we put them in and we notice it's not having the intended impact, we can move it and change it. We can test out the traffic patterns. There's a lot of hesitation right now saying like, let's close the street to traffic and not knowing how that'll impact the surrounding neighborhood. This says, let's try something and maybe it will have that impact or maybe it won't, and we can adjust from there. So this resolution was done again with the support, talking to community members, talking to the community assembly, talking to neighborhood councils, talking to Reimagine Spokane and other community groups, working with Public Works and the Planning Department and Police Department to try to figure out some things that can actually be done this year. So this just affirms that the council supports adaptive design strategies as a policy choice. It doesn't mean that everything will be adaptive design. It just means that this is another tool in the toolkit. We will still have permanent programs, cement, concrete programs that we're working on and have been working on. It requests the administration purchase and pilot adaptive design infrastructure this year in the mid-year budget update. It has at least one pilot program per council district that are curb extensions and traffic islands, and it establishes a bike lane enhancement pilot project beyond just Riverside. So that's, once we talked about creating a physical barrier between the bike lane and people. If you go to the next slide. It requests potentially hiring a project employee who can help fund these things as an option. If the Public Works Department doesn't think it's necessary, that's totally okay, too. And it also emphasizes that these are not necessarily permanent solutions, but they can be led to permanent solutions and upgraded. And it also requests that the administration quickly implement new automated traffic safety cameras. We've been asking for months and months, actually over a year, about expanding our cameras, and so this is asking for that to be done immediately. And it also signals to staff that we support getting a consultant to build out, getting a consultant to build out a manual that we can use for more projects in the future. So what do adaptive design strategies look like? Go to the next two slides. So sometimes there are curb bumpouts like this one that are painted with bollards or planters, candlesticks, delineators, things that have a vertical separation that you can do that. We have a contract with Spokane Arts already about the street murals, asphalt art, so we could look at how we can have them do this inside the area for traffic calming, beautify, create more placemaking, bring more joy to our neighborhoods and our city. We go to the next one. Examples are other armadillos. These are types of separators for vehicles, car lanes. Doesn't necessarily have to be this type. These are just examples. If you go to the next one, you can have temporary raised crosswalks or speed tables to slow down traffic. If you go to the next one, wheel stops. We've all seen these in parking lots across the city. So again, these are just creating multiple options that are quicker and easier, along with bollards or vertical separators that create more of a separation, too. And so that's what this resolution does, and thank you to everyone who came and supported. And thanks to the staff who are working on implementing it this year.
Any other council commentary? In case, prepare to vote.
I just have one quick thing to say. Just thank you so much for working on this. Thanks to everyone for testifying. Really appreciate the name change. I do think, you know, Janice's death has really, I think it's ripped a lot of the community apart, quite frankly. You know, she's someone who invested so much in the community. She biked 20 miles a day. She walked everywhere. And she had the signal when she was crossing. Councilmembers Zepone did an excellent job on this. Councilman McClutkey, and I think, too, when you look at that trend over the last eight years, over 51 pedestrian deaths in the city, like, what are we doing here? This is urgent. And for the adaptive designs, I know that the project that's happening in District 2, this is something that the neighborhood council has been asking for for 10 years. So to see part of that with the Altamont Traffic Study, for that to move forward, that already in itself is a massive win. And I, my hope is that out of this, we are going to see real action and carrying on will be part of Janice's legacy.
Thank you. Councilman Bingo?
Yeah, just quickly, I think that there's a number of good ideas in this, and I particularly did appreciate the name change. I think it's great for us to honor people, and so I appreciate that name change.
Thank you. Councilman McClutkey?
I just want to thank Councilmember Zepone for his hard work on this stuff. I've been hearing for years from neighborhoods and other groups that have struggled to get their project recommendations that go through CA and all of this process actually built out. And sometimes they do come back with more expensive proposals, and I understand that frustration. Councilmember Zepone's been trying to promote this concept for over a year, and I'm really glad that we were able to put this resolution together and get some buy-in from the administration to start to implement these ideas.
I'm certainly supportive of this. We just came from a conference where Peter Kajayama gave us Love Where You Live, and it was about adaptive designs around public safety and transportation. And what he shared, which we hope to bring him to Spokane, was amazing stuff that really helps change people's behavior. And so with that, prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2024-55, adopting the city of Spokane's federal legislative agenda for the years 2024 to 2025.
That was deferred.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was deferred, sorry.
Till July 8th.
That was deferred for, yeah, July 8th, sorry. Resolution 2024-56, approving the appointment of Catherine Fairborn as the budget director for the Spokane City Council.
We have one public comment. That's Justin Holler.
Go ahead, Justin.
Hello. Yeah, stop wasting money. You're 50 million over budget. That's it.
Thank you, Justin. Council Commenter?
Council President? Yeah, I just, real quick, I want to, first of all, compliment Jacoby again on running a great process for trying to hire our new budget director. Obviously, we lost our budget director who was hired away by the administration back in January, February. And so this has been kind of a slow roll, but really glad to get this done. We had some outstanding candidates. It really was not an easy choice, actually, especially once we narrowed it down and were hearing from them. So I'm really glad, though, that we found Catherine. I think she's going to do an amazing job. I was really impressed by her and the work product that she provided us, and so I look forward to this. Obviously, the budget is a huge aspect of council, so this is a pretty important position, a pretty important position. So glad to have her on board.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? I also want to thank all the applicants. It was just amazing to see the number of people who want to step up and work for the city to help us make it better. And it was a challenging process, but I believe we ended up with a good applicant to advance her name, so we look forward to working with her. Prepare to vote. Thank you very much.
Resolution 2024-57, approving settlement of claim for damages of Wayne Strunk, $59,990.96.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown Spokane. I want to express my strong support for Resolution 2024-057, which is a resolution aimed at resolving a claim of water damage filed by Mr. Strunk. On December 14th, 2023, Mr. Strunk filed a claim for damages with the city of Spokane following significant water damage to his basement caused by a break in the city's six-inch cast iron water main. The resulting flood left Mr. Strunk's basement submerged in three inches of water, causing damages mounting to nearly $65,000. This resolution proposes a payment of, well, I'm not going to read the amount, but to Mr. Strunk as a full settlement and compromise of the claim without admission of fault and liability. I support this, obviously, because it shows that the city is willing to pay for their mistakes. Obviously, this was the city's water main that burst and it flooded someone's basement, so, you know, I don't see why the city shouldn't be, you know, helping Mr. Strunk pay for this. And when it comes to the other lawsuits, it's a different story. Like, we got a nice juicy one coming up you guys know about, and that one's going to be good. I can't wait to talk about that one, but thank you.
Thank you, Will. Next is Justin Holler.
Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, when someone's basement gets flooded, it's pretty clear-cut and cut and dry. Pay the guy.
Thank you.
Other stuff is a little bit more convoluted, and you need to see both sides, but this is pretty cut and dry. Pay the guy.
Thank you, Justin.
That's it.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you. Did I just? Oh, I was too quick on the button. Prepare to vote, please.
My light's out.
Yeah.
There we go. Approved. All right, try it again.
Okay, try it again. Can I get, Ms. Fish, will you take a verbal vote on these two gentlemen? Are y'all in agreement?
It's us two.
It's us two.
Oh, those two.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I think that's seven zero. Thank you. Next?
Resolution 2024-58, setting forth the city council's approval and endorsement of funding for contracts arising from the Home ARP grants and authorizing the execution of the applicable and appropriate contracts to once formulated without further city council action.
We have one public testimony. Justin Holler. Justin Holler.
Go ahead, Justin.
I'll skip this one.
Okay, thank you.
I skip it.
Thank you, Justin.
Any council commentary? Hearing none. Prepare to vote.
Resolution 2024-59, appointing new members to the Equity Subcommittee of the City Council's Finance and Administration Committee and setting the length of member terms.
Any council commentary? Councilmember Navarrete, then Councilmember Katkard.
We do have testimony on that, too.
Hang on, let me take testimony first. John Alder.
John Alder, as member of the Equity Subcommittee, I've had chance to work with Lindsay Shaw, Tyler, and the others that are nominated. They already are showing up for meetings, providing valuable insight, and are ready to go, so they should be confirmed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Will Healings.
Can't find my speech, but I'm just going to say I'm against this. Obviously, the title alone is a big turnoff. Equity Subcommittee. I have a nice speech written about this, and I'm sorry, but, like I said, I can't really talk too much about it because I don't have my speech. So give me a second, sorry. All right, well, anyways, I'm just going to say it again. I'm against this Resolution 2024-059. I'll send you my speech in email.
Thank you, Will. Next, we have Justin Holler.
Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, I don't know why we need all these committees. You know, it just, it seems like you could just make a decision instead of having a committee, instead of dancing around subjects and talking about it for days on end, or weeks on end, or months or years on end. Just make a decision. You know, you don't need to be so indecisive. You seven supposedly are in charge, and then you got the mayor, so why do you need all these subcommittees? And especially if you're going to put somebody on a payroll for some of these committees, you know, you, you, Lisa Brown started all these new positions, I don't know if they're paid or not, but there's all these people with diversity, equity, and inclusion, and how about we just hire qualified people? I don't care what you look like, or what your background is, are you good at what your job, you know? I don't care what a pilot looks like, I don't care what a framer looks like, I don't care what an HVAC guy looks like, are they good at their job? Can they do their job? You know, we don't need all these diversity, equity, inclusion nonsense. It's redundant. We already have laws in place, we don't need committees to talk about stuff and go out and hand each other and, you know, make everyone feel safe and included. Everyone's included, we all live here. Next.
Thank you, Justin. Councilmember Navar, Navarrete?
Thank you. So there are four members that we are welcoming. Two are from District Two and two are from District One, and it's Anna Trustee, Lindsay Shaw, Tyler Tumush, and Wendy Shatz. And just so, point of information, all these are voluntary folks that volunteer their time. I know there's, it's hard for people to accept equity and inclusion, but we are a city where we all belong, and this committee is, we're up to 10 now.
Thank you. Councilmember Dylan? Councilman Katkard?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll try to brief. I had intended to vote no, not for any specific person reason, but I am just very frustrated with the Subcommittee system process. I don't think they're effective. I don't think they've been doing what they were intended to do when they were created. And in particular, as we're dealing with budget issues, and, you know, we are clamping down at the council level as well, I believe these are a huge distraction for our staff. Councilmembers, it's not so bad. Councilmembers can kind of show up to the meetings and leave, and that's it. But for staff, there's a lot of planning, a lot of time that goes into these. And so I really want to see, and I'm not necessarily saying we get rid of them all, but I think we need a wholesale look at the system to see what works, what doesn't work. Can we reform it? Should we get rid of it? I think that's a question we should ask, but I think we should look closely at it. I know there's been some discussion from the administration over eliminating some aspects of one of the other subcommittees, the Housing Subcommittee, because of some, just obstacles that they have with code because of the way it's structured. I just think we should take the opportunity to look at all of them, figure out what works, how can we make them the most time-efficient for our staff, especially in our current budget situation, and then go from there. But I will support the appointment. I mean, there's no harm in adding members at this point, but I do think before we get too far down the road, we have got to review and reform these.
Thank you. Did you want to speak, Councilman Bingo? Councilman McClutkey?
I just wanted to clarify about these committees. None of these are new, and we do have a long tradition of having citizens advisory committees in this community and across Washington State. I think they're an important part of public outreach and open government. Not everybody can come to our briefings and our council meetings like these folks that are here tonight do, but there are other ways to participate, and it is important to provide multiple avenues for the community to participate in local government.
Any other commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C.36517, establishing the Transportation Commission, repealing chapters 4.37 and 4.38 of the Spokane Municipal Code, amending sections 4.16.020 and 4.16.030 of the Spokane Municipal Code, amending section 3.018.365 of the Spokane Municipal Code, and adopting a new chapter 4.40 to Title IV of the Spokane Municipal Code, as amended on April 29, 2024, and as amended earlier today.
Thank you. We have two public testimonies. That'd be Will Healings and Justin Holler.
My name is Will Healings, and I live downtown Spokane. I voice my strong opposition to ordinance C.36517, which is an ordinance that seeks to create a Citizens Transportation Commission. The stated purpose of this new commission is to supposedly unify the roles of various existing transportation-related boards, committees, and subcommittees, and to create a more transparent process for providing advice and recommendations to Mayor Lisa Brown and the Spokane City Council. The supposed goal is to achieve a safe and equitable, there's that word again, multimodal transportation system consistent with the comprehensive plan and the policies of the city of Spokane. While these goals sound commendable on the surface, I have serious concerns about the underlying intentions and necessity of this new commission. The city of Spokane already has four transportation-related boards and commissions, the Bicycle Advisory Board, the Citizens Transportation Advisory Board, the Parking Advisory Committee, and the Pedestrian Traffic and Transportation Safety Committee. That's a long title, you guys need to fix that. Each of these boards and commissions has been established to address specific transportation issues within our community. Problem I have with these, and I've addressed this before, the Bicycle Advisory Board, I wanted to be a part of that, and I showed up, and I showed up here at city council. Guess what? The doors were locked, there was no way of me getting in contact with them, and so I just, you know, they only do that once a month. So I got a long speech, and I'm going to send this to you guys, but like I said, it seems to me the only way you get on some of these commissions is if maybe you have a D in front of your name, because I have a big R, like a big, big R, and I don't see why I'm not getting on any of these boards or invited, because supposedly to get on some of these boards, you got to be chosen by the people on the boards. I don't, it's kind of confusing. But you guys need to stop with all these commission, these boards and committees and subcommittees. It's just confusing, like Councilman Katkard said, it's very confusing. But thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, I echo most of what Will said. You know, there seems to be an abundance of redundancy, and it seems that if you have ideology that aligns, you can be part of the club, but if you don't have ideology that aligns with the club, then you can't be part of the club. And that doesn't seem like equity and inclusion, that seems like exclusion. And if you're identify as this, or if you identify as that, you can't be part of the club, but if you do identify as this and identify as that, then you are part of the club. I don't see how that's inclusionary. You know, much like the Rainbow Crosswalks only help out a small percentage of people versus filling up potholes, which helps everybody, how about you stop the redundancy, and I think it was Katkard that said, you know, it creates a lot of busy work for other people, and, like, you know, like I said before, there's seven of you. Seven of you are supposed to be in charge of the city, and supposed to be in charge of what goes on in the city, and maybe you need to take things by the reins and stop having all these committees and go, you know what? We're going to make a decisive plan of action, we're going to make a decision, we're going to stick with that decision, hopefully if it's not wasting $50 million, or other fundage on stupid useless projects like the Rainbow Crosswalks that help out nobody. But how many, how many different kinds of committees do you really need? It seems like a redundant amount of committees. That's all.
Thank you, Justin.
Council commentary? Councilmember McClutkey?
In case it wasn't clear from the title of this, this is a consolidation of transportation committees, so we actually are eliminating some redundancies. Mr. Healings did not mention the Planning Commission Transportation Subcommittee, that is one of the committees that will be rolling into this committee among some of the others that he mentioned. So some of these committees, there was kind of an uneven amount of participation in some of these, so we thought if there was consolidation, we could get a larger and more robust group and more conversation around these instead of having a bunch of separate groups on transportation.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, anything transportation-related, I think, is underrepresented by council members in District One. In case you didn't know, we don't have any representation on STA, so so long as that continues, I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Any other commentary? Councilmember McClutkey?
I should have mentioned, we should encourage Mr. Healings to apply. I know he's an avid bicyclist and pedestrian, so his voice would be very welcome on those.
And just for the community, when applications come before us, we do not know what their political affiliation is. We have no idea. So really, that was incorrect. Prepare to vote.
Ordinance C.36528, streamlining license requirements for entertainment facilities in all ages venues, repealing sections 10.238.040 and 10.238.60 of the Spokane Municipal Code, amending sections 4.04.020, 10.238.020, 10.238.030, and 10.70.100 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
One public comment. Justin Holler?
Hold on, Justin. Okay, go ahead.
I'll pass on this one.
Okay, thank you. Counselor?
Yeah, I'll just say that I want to appreciate the mayor's office for bringing this forward. I think this is also an example, this is effectively just cleaning up code and getting rid of sections that haven't really been applicable for a while for entertainment facilities, and I want to appreciate this and point out that this is an example of repealing code and getting rid of laws and not just adding, so I want to appreciate that , too.
Councilmember Dylan?
Yeah, definitely in support of this, just still a little frustrated it wasn't called the Footloose Ordinance, but I can live with that.
Thank you. Senior of the commentary, prepare to vote.
Ms. Fisher?
Ordinance C.36120 is deferred to July 15, 2024. First reading ordinances, ordinance C.36532 relating to the city's Code of Ethics, adopting a new chapter 1.04B of the Spokane Municipal Code, and repealing chapter 1.04A of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance C.36533 relating to whistleblower protection, adopting a new chapter 1.04C of the Spokane Municipal Code. And ordinance C.36534, titled Gun Violence Prevention for a Safer Spokane, relating to the Establishment provisions relating to firearm safety and prevention, adopting a new chapter 10.75 to Title 10 of the Spokane Municipal Code, repealing section 12.05.065 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance C.36535 to adopt an overlay zone for property located at 1925 West 36th Avenue in the city and county of Spokane, state of Washington, by amending the official zoning map to show a planned unit development overlay zone for said property. Ordinance C.36536 to adopt an overlay zone for property located at 4502 North Havana Street, 4599 East Longfellow Street, and 4522 East Longfellow Avenue in the city and county of Spokane, state of Washington, by amending the official zoning map to show a planned unit development overlay zone for said property. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
We have several public comments on first reading. First is Cherry Hill. And after Cherry will be Deanna Ogden, or Dina Ogden.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Bird, for your five years of service to Spokane. I support tonight's ordinance, number 534. This is all, seems to me to be pretty common sense stuff. It's actually sad that this stuff has to be legislated. I've never understood why people feel the need to bring a weapon to a meeting such as this. It befuddles me. While I appreciate the concern of some people who think that they're keeping me safe by bringing their own weapon to this type of meeting, frankly, you scare me. You're not trained to do this stuff. Keeping these meetings safe is the job of public, of our law enforcement officers, period, end of report. Well, most of this, most of these items are covered in, by state statute. It doesn't hurt to, for city ordinance, for city to reinstate some of this stuff. In eastern Washington, we're kind of slow sometimes, and maybe we don't understand laws that are passed over on the other side of the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Cherry. Dina? Welcome.
My name is Dina Ogden. I am a Spokane resident. I live within city limits with my family, and I have two children in Spokane Public Schools. I'm here to voice my support for the Gun Violence Prevention for a Safer Spokane ordinance. Some may already know these stats, but I would like to remind everyone here that guns are the leading cause of death for American children and teens, and according, excuse me, that was according to the CDC, and firearm fatalities among children and teens grew by 87% from 2011 to 2021. That was according to the American Academy of Pediatrics. Experts say we can reverse this trend, but meaningful action, like the steps... Experts say we can reverse this trend, but meaningful action like the steps outlined, proposed in this ordinance is necessary. The Second Amendment starts with the words "well regulated," so there has always been room for these kinds of guidelines. Reasonable, common sense guidelines when it comes to the right to bear arms. We need them now more than ever. Um, this ordinance would be an excellent step for our communities and our kids' safety overall. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak and for considering this.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council president and council members. My name is Kate Tellis, and I'm here to talk about, uh, Councilmember Dillon's Gun Violence Prevention for a Safer Spokane. Um, I am one of the co-chairs of Spokane Chapter, the Spokane Chapter of Moms Demand Action. My shirt says Big Mom Energy, if you can't read it. Um, we are 500 members strong, and, uh, to, to a point that Councilmember Klitsky made earlier, many of us are young mo-, are moms with young children. And staying at a council meeting until nine o'clock at night is just not necessarily possible. But we do have four of our members here. You should be receiving emails from a lot of others in support of this as well. Uh, for those of you that do not know, Moms Demand Action is a nonpartisan grassroots movement of Americans fighting for public safety measures that can protect people from gun violence. I am speaking to my, tonight in support of this ordinance. As a mother of nine-year-old Liam and three-year-old Eliana, my greatest fear is a mass shooting, whether at school, on a parade route, or at a sporting event. This ordinance goes a long way to help mitigate that risk and create a safer environment for everyone, whether they are learning or playing at recess at school, celebrating a parade, cheering on their favorite team, or listening to an awesome concert. Additionally, as a former Assistant District Attorney for New Mexico and someone who prosecuted domestic violence felonies, I support this ordinance continuing to confiscate guns as provided by, for law, but also for providing the flexibility for the Spokane Public Department to retain confiscated firearms where and when it is appropriate. As has been mentioned, money is tight, and I think this is a great addition to this ordinance. Please support this ordinance. I believe it will make us in Spokane, adults and kids, much safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Good evening. My name is Will Heelings, and I am a proud veteran, um, and I also live downtown Spokane. And also, as you can tell, my shirt, I love guns. I think everybody should have guns all over, even at this meeting. Because when I leave this meeting, I gotta walk outside and I have to worry about my safety. And I'm a big guy, trust me, I can fight. But guns do the job a lot better, in my view. But I want to express my strong opposition to ordinance C 3654, or 34, a so-called gun violence prevention for a safer Spokane ordinance, which was written and sponsored by two freshman Democrat city council members, Dillon and Klitsky. So they're taking a big thing on the gun, gun thing. Uh, you know, there's so much more that they could be focused on. This ordinance aims to establish provisions relating to firearm safety and prevention. First and foremost, why are these Democrats suddenly focusing on gun violence? The portrayal of gun violence in our community is grossly exaggerated. You are statistically more likely to be stabbed or suffer from drug-related violence here in Spokane than being shot. That's a fact. The Second Amendment of the United States Constitution is crucial as it guarantees the right to bear arms, a fundamental liberty that allows law-abiding citizens such as myself to protect themselves. In Washington State, it is perfectly legal also, so you know, to open, carry weapons. I could walk down the sidewalk out there with my AR-15 or my gun, and there's nothing that you can do. It's legal. What is truly alarming is the misplaced priority of this ordinance. Instead of addressing the real public health crisis of fentanyl overdoses and deaths, these Democrats are fixated on supposed gun violence. Fentanyl is killing more people in our community than firearms. According to current statistics, the rate of death and despair caused by drugs like fentanyl far surpasses that of gun-related incidents here in Spokane. But like I said, I strongly oppose this, and I wish you would focus on other things, not gun violence. How about the fentanyl and people getting assaulted and, and all the other stuff that's happening? But instead, you focus on gun violence and the Rainbow Crosswalk.
Thank you, Will. Next is Justin Holler, and then Dennis Flynn.
Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, I, I, again, I, I echo some of the things that, that Will, uh, mentioned. Um, I, I differ slightly on, on some things, but the, the, yeah, I think Dave Chappelle played best. The First Amendment is, is first for a reason. The Second Amendment is there just in case the first one doesn't work. You know, a good guy with a gun stops a bad guy with a gun. You know, the fact that you don't know if someone's carrying, uh, means that it, there's a more polite society. I, I don't understand why you are concentrated on good guys with guns. How about you try and take, uh, guns away from the criminals first? No one, no one seems to want to be able to do that. You know, uh, you know, you, you, you can't stop a bad guy with, uh, with, with a knife if, if they have a gun. You can't bring a, a, a knife to a gunfight. Um, but it, but like, like Will said, there's a bigger issue at hand. Uh, dr-, you know, you're, you're more likely to, to touch fentanyl, uh, uh, door handle or, or, uh, have someone smoking drugs outside the, the building downtown, like, like where Will lives, or, or, or other places. There's heroin needles, there's all kinds of, uh, paraphernalia downtown, uh, and no one seems to care about that. But because it's a hot topic about guns, all of a sudden, oh, we gotta take away the guns, we gotta take away the guns. Well, how about you, you focus on criminalizing criminal behavior again? You know, Lisa Brown was horrible as a state legislator. She has a track record of letting criminals go and creating this flawless atmosphere that she, that we now, uh, are suffering. And then everyone's bowing down to her, to Lisa Brown's idea about, oh, uh, gun safety, gun safety. It's just, it's ridiculous. You know, you, you need, you need to start, uh, looking at the, uh, criminalizing criminal behavior again, instead of allowing these multiple felony, uh, people, uh, to just run rampant in Spokane. Like, how many, how many times have you heard where someone has 20, 30, 40 felonies, and they're still walking around amongst us? You know, I mean, I, you know, it's just, it's ridiculous. You know, you shouldn't have these multiple felons walking around. You, you need, you need to penalize them and start focusing on important stuff versus trying to, to regulate behavior.
Thank you, Justin.
You can't make them. Okay.
Thank you. Next is Dennis Flynn.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's on me. Go ahead, Dennis.
Hi, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles regarding C 36534. Debate on the appropriateness of these specific restrictions aside, one of the whereas makes a point that, according to the Gun Violence Archive website, there have been 135 mass shootings so far in 2024. You know how many have been in Spokane? Zero. Washington State? Zero. Washington, Idaho, and Oregon states combined? Zero. And take it for what you think it's worth, but going through the cities on that website that had more than one mass shooting, 26 out of 30 of them are Democrat or progressive-controlled cities that have arguably the most stricted gun laws already. Another whereas references the tragedy of Calvin teen deaths. What an abhorrent and despicable thing to include these tragedies. Anyone who knows anything about this knows these are suicides, and a gun is not a prerequisite for a suicide. Using this is just gross. Another whereas references the Washington Alliance for Gun Responsibility. Yeah, I'd expect as much unbiased dribble coming out of them, as I'm sure many on the council would expect unbiased dribble coming out of the Second Amendment Foundation. Another whereas states that stronger gun laws have been proven to reduce gun violence, but doesn't include any reference material. I don't accept the premise that you're an expert in Second Amendment, Washington Constitution, nor familiar with both sides of the argument. And isn't it interesting that there's no whereas talking about the defensive use of guns that have hundreds of thousands a year, or that no mass shootings have occurred in schools where teachers are allowed to be armed? Lastly, since the final whereas makes the claim that the Spokane council intends to update regulations to make the community safer, since this is the first reading, I highly recommend you amend it to identify the specific metrics that will be tracked, to identify the effectiveness of this new regulation, and to automatically repeal it after two years without a positive vote from the council to extend it if the metrics prove there was no positive effect. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our legislative agenda for this evening. We'll be going to open forum. Councilmembers, would you like to take a break, or can we go directly into open forum? We'll go directly into open forum. Um, just a reminder, when addressing the council, members of the public shall direct all remarks to the council president and shall confine their remarks to the matters that are specifically before the council at that time, or, if speaking during open forum, shall confine their remarks to the affairs of the city. You have two minutes. And first up is Lynn Peterson, and then John Harp. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Lindy Peterson. I'm the owner of Heartland Coffee here in Spokane. Um, I'm here tonight to discuss the absolute devastating impact the plan to possibly extend the raised channeling on Geiger Boulevard further east to restrict access to our driveway would have on our business. Um, I grew up here in Spokane. I graduated from North Central, um, and Eastern. My parents grew up here. Uh, we're very excited at the opportunity to open a family business here in our hometown, especially in the growing neighborhood of the West Plains. Um, I'm very proud to be a young female business owner here in Spokane. This is a town I know and believe to be a champion of small businesses. Um, we use several of those businesses ourselves. Craven Coffee right outside of downtown here roasts our beans on Wednesday and Sarah's there every Thursday to deliver them. Our maintenance techs, electricians, distributors are all local businesses we work with every day. The community we have here and support for each other is a large part of what makes Spokane special. For me to hear and see there are plans to knowingly and to intentionally restrict access to and from our business and to completely eliminate a left turn in and out of our driveway is devastating, especially as it is done in an effort to benefit other businesses, specifically in out-of-state corporations such as 7-Eleven. Almost our entire customer base comes from out the west. They need and rely on the ability to exit left out of our driveway as it was purposely designed and approved. It is not only convenient, but necessary for our customers and potential growth of our company. It is this access that connects us to Amazon, the airport, and the freeway, and all the major hubs that keep our business going. Extending the channeling beyond our driveway completely dissolves one of our greatest assets, which is convenience and ease. I'm excited for the growth of the West Plains, and I hope we are able to bring in a new business, but to do so at the expense of ours, of my livelihood, and the livelihood of our employees is devastating. I'm asking to take action to maintain our left-in-and-out access as it is and was approved. I urge you to keep our driveway open, keep our business open, and keep my family's hope of leaving a positive impact and legacy in this community alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Can I offer a point of information? The property that is in your comment letter is outside the city limits, so we don't have jurisdiction to influence the decisions that are being made. That would be Spokane County. Um, but we do really appreciate your commitment to local businesses and keeping us informed of these issues.
You, you can go ahead, Nell.
I'm just gonna point of order. Councilmembers, we, we don't interact. You can follow up.
Please, please connect, please connect with her.
Yeah, just, can you forward information to our email so we can try to get some questions answered?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Next up is John Harp, and then Christopher Savage.
Council President, President Wilkerson, council members. Real quick, I just want to touch, yes, our property, our building is on county property, but it's a city street. So there's both involved there. And it's a city's effect on us. Anyway, here we go. Hello, my name is John Hart. I'm here to request consideration and action regarding raised channelization efforts by your traffic engineering department, which would severely restrict access to our business. On Thursday, June 13th, we provided to each of you prints and background information to help you prepare for today's meeting. My wife, daughter, and I own Heartland Coffee at 3519 South Geiger Boulevard. Our business has been open two and a half years. We currently have full left and right turn ingress egress to Geiger Boulevard. This access was approved with no restrictions September 2020 by the city, county, and state. Your traffic engineering department is pursuing only right in and right out driveway access to accommodate our neighbors' proposed 7-Eleven convenience store and truck stop. This will crush, crush our daughter's coffee business and diminish our property values. 7-Eleven's latest design is a joint driveway on Fosene Road. This will mix coffee shop auto traffic with semi-truck turning traffic. This does not change the raised channelization plan or reduce the crushing effects of limited access to us. As of right now, traffic engineering seems to be accepting this stance at our demise. Our latest meeting on June 18th with Jeff Rowan, the adjoining property owner, Patty Kells and Inga Note from City Traffic Engineering, Dave Illstrait, Spokane County Public Works, Corey Clark and Greg Fig with DOT, and Barry Green with Spokane County, just reinforced our fears that Heartland Coffee will be sacrificed for the benefit of a larger business.
Thank you, John. Your time is up. Fast two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Christopher Savage and Rick Bochuk.
First off, I just want to say thank you, Jacobi, for your five years of service. Good evening, City Council. My name is Christopher Savage, and I live in District Three. Tonight, I stand before you to talk upon why the council did not meet last week. I'm a bit confused as to the standards and methods applied for when the council decides to cancel, cancel their meetings, as it seems there is little consistency when it comes to this topic. For example, last week, the council decided not to meet due to observing the Juneteenth holiday, yet the aforementioned holiday was on a Wednesday, not on a Monday. Why didn't the council meet when they could have? Monday wasn't a holiday. Many people still went to work. I know I had to. So why did the council think they were exempt from work for not only Monday, but Wednesday as well? Last year, on October 9th, the council decided to meet on, and hold a legislative session, even though it was Indigenous Peoples' Day. You can see where my confusion lies, as I don't understand why the council chose to meet for Indigenous Peoples' Day, but not for Juneteenth. Are you saying that Juneteenth is more important than Indigenous Peoples' Day? We need all hands on deck with the multiple crises that are reflecting Spokane currently. With the recent approval of the council and mayor salary increase of 27%, which for council members is 62,000 a year plus benefits, the council needs to be meeting and discussing our city's concerns as much as possible so we can find the correct solutions for our concerns to justify such dramatic increase with the council salaries. The council has already missed the equivalent of two months' worth of meetings so far this year, and we have just reached the end of June. This is clearly unacceptable. Please, I implore you to do your job so that we can bring Spokane back to a place of honor, standing, and respectability that I know we can find together.
Thank you. Rick Bochuk? And then Will Heelings.
I'm gonna give thanks to, uh, all the panhandlers and street people out there for one of the things that they do that they don't get credit for. They keep the sex offenders out of the downtown area, except for the Bus Plaza. They don't keep the sex offenders from the Bus Plaza because apparently they get protected there. But just about every other place downtown area, wherever the street people are, there's no sex offenders. You should be thankful for that. Because whenever you see a panhandler on the street, there's no sex offender there. We have 50 sex offenders, Level Two and Level Three in the downtown area alone. And so when I hear people like the Downtown Spokane Partnership coming against all the street people, but they will not address the sex offenders. It's amazing about that, isn't it? Because they don't want, they don't want the world to know that we have them here. But these are the worst of the worst. These are people that have blessed little children. So when you, so when you ever see a panhandler downtown, think of the positive side of it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Will?
My name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown Spokane. I want to discuss the contentious history of the Rainbow Crosswalk here in Spokane, Washington. This crosswalk was intended to supposedly symbolize inclusion and diversity, but has instead become a significant division within our community. Something I'm really frustrated about is now, and you guys probably think this is, you're happy about this, but there's three young individuals, they may face jail time for leaving tire marks from a Lime scooter on the Rainbow Crosswalk. And what's so frustrating about that is, we've, you've heard people come up here and talk about Lime scooters, they ride them on the sidewalks, they leave tire marks, they're unsafe and all that. So what does Lime do to help you guys out? They make it to where supposedly people now can't ride Lime scooters over the crosswalk because it's so important. Well, if you go out there right now, after City Council, go look at that crosswalk. There's paint on it, it looks terrible, it looks worse than before they touched it up. And you guys, and supposedly it costs $15,000 to repair and touch that up, you guys blocked down Spokane Falls Boulevard for a whole day, and then the mayor was out there rolling with the paint roller, which was bigger than her, and Resili and all these Democrats doing little photo opportunities. And I'm sitting there watching, in shock, with my MAGA hat on. And I sit here and think, well, I live downtown, they are, they don't care about my safety. I go to City Council and almost as much as I can to address different things, and you guys aren't doing nothing about it.
Thank you, Will. Next is Jay McPherson, and then Dan DeBois.
I'd like to point out the hypocrisy of the city motto, "In Spokane, we all belong." I think it's a good motto, but it's not being practiced. In our nation's past, it was necessary for everyone to stand up against slaveholders. Sadly, there were only a remnant of obedient Christ followers willing to do so. Many couldn't see past the lies and propaganda of the powerful elites of that day. Similarly, everyone should have stood up against the displacement of the First Nations people, but again, there was too small a remnant willing to do so. Too many couldn't see past the selfish, motivated lies and propaganda of their time. Today, it is necessary to stand against that same evil. Today, innocent children have their rights stripped from them by those who dishonestly try to frame their killing as a woman's rights issue. This line of thinking is preposterous. When is it okay to kill another innocent human being? Please see past the lies and propaganda of the powerful abortion profiteers and the money they've contributed to your campaigns. An unborn human is inarguably a distinct human person. This is not a matter of opinion, but objective reality. If you are sincere about the motto "In Spokane, we all belong," then please make today, June 24th, a celebration of human rights, and stop discriminating against little children. If Spokane, we all belong, do unborn children belong? Or do you dehumanize them based on their size, or their level of development, or their environment, or their dependency? When has it been right to discriminate against anyone else on those grounds? To the point of death. Unborn persons are the most marginalized, abused, and discriminated group of people in Spokane because they have no voice of their own. Powerful people deny them the right to life, the most basic of all human rights. We kill more unborn children than we do with guns or fentanyl combined.
Thank you, Jay, that's your time. Dan? And after Dan will be Louis Arthur.
Ephesians 5:3 says, "But immorality, or any impurity or greed must not even be named among you as proper among saints." Off the city website, according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, "The definition of 'traffic calming' is a combination of mainly physical measures to reduce the negative effects of motor vehicle use, alter driver behavior, and improve conditions for non-motorized street users. The budget line you use to pay for your rainbow-colored intersections in support of your LGBTQ agenda came from traffic calming income collected from drivers issued tickets because violations of intersections that are monitored by red light cameras." Now, an argument can be made that the light cameras themselves are traffic calming, but issues of morality illustrated in color paint are not. Just under $1 million stolen from the coffers of the drivers in Spokane to support your agenda. I spent some time researching artwork as a traffic calming measure. Like anything else, you can find both pro and cons on if it works. Nowhere do you see anything about changing the function of the art to promote any social agenda. Let's be clear, this is your agenda item, and has nothing to do with traffic, and is far from calming. Notice there's nothing in the traffic calming definition about cramming your amoral social agenda down the throats of citizens through these artistic renderings. There's an increasing number of issues in Spokane and across the country that clearly define a major opposition of views. This would be among the top on anyone's list, and this is the issue that you chose to put into paint. To face every driver in Spokane, in intersections that are driven on and walked on 1,000 times a day, and then you're surprised when they're vandalized.
Thank you, Dan. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Louis Arthur.
Thank you, guys. My name's Louis Arthur, I'm from the Arizona border, and I just want to go over a few things with your city right now. Been living on the streets with your homeless youth for the past two months now. I've had a 16-year-old girl raped, got two STDs. I've had three that we had to bring back from Narcan. I've got little children on the streets that are taking grown men who are ODing from fentanyl, and they're bringing them back to life. Now, we have a shortage of Narcan on the streets, whether you guys realize that or not, and the nasal ones are going to be your lifesavers because the intravenous muscular ones take a lot of time, in some situations, we don't have time. I have dozens of videos of your citizens dying on your streets, being brought back from the dead several times, two with one guy. Your children are being terrorized by predators. There are old men that are running around with 14, 15, and 13-year-old girls. Your crosswalk is a grooming center. I have multiple children from that location. You have staff having sex with minors, and they want to cover it up. You have propaganda, I've got children with F-12 on their faces, and they're saying, "F the police." These are your kids, they're dying. I came up here to find missing border children because your government's trafficking through my properties. I've got 300 missing kids in the northwest sector. Pedophiles, violent criminals are allowed to sponsor these children because they waived background checks. You don't know that. That happened three years ago. They're not checking for family units. We pulled many of these children from pedophiles, go to my news channel. This is actually happening. Now, these are children from the border. I've got children out here who don't know our language, don't know our law enforcement, they're not going to call the cops if someone's abusing them, they're afraid of deportation. I got an apartment building I'm going to go to after here. There's El Salvadorian, Guatemalan, and Ecuadorian children sleeping on the floor with no furniture, barely any food in there, and you have people in high levels of this government who own rental properties, and you guys are scamming the migrants.
Thank you, Louis.
And I want you guys to know, if you want to help your kids, I'm going out there right now. These kids have no food. You guys sat all this time for three hours, ain't saved a single life.
Your time is up.
I want you to forget this, but what I'm going to do in your city and to your homes, because we're going to bring the problem to your homes now. Now I'm bringing the problem to your doors.
Thank you, sir. David Schilling, and then Sunshine Wigan, is she still with us?
Hi, I'm David Schilling of Spokane. I want to start out by thanking you for the rainbow intersection that you made, and especially the automated dissection that you have for everybody who desecrates it. I think we're all for equity and inclusion and tolerance, right? I have a word of concern, though, and that is that the Merriam-Webster dictionary defines religion as a personal set or institutional system of religious attitudes, beliefs, and practices. And with, as with most other religions, I'm willing to tolerate the pride religion, but I'm worried that by singling it out, you're setting the system, they're setting the city up for possible numerous lawsuits because you're violating the separation of church and state. And so Matthew Danielson of Spokane Pride said, "We might as well celebrate the differences instead of fighting each other." And that is a good idea. It gives us a way to show that we're not favoring one religion over another. Rather than fight lawsuits later, that could be very expensive. I think that the city should pay for and protect intersections with art from every other religion that's out there. At one intersection, for instance, you could have the original symbol of the rainbow, the symbol that God put in the sky when he promised that he wouldn't flood the world again. Underneath would, of course, have to have the Noah's Ark. In the middle may be a picture of Moses carrying the Ten Commandments. This would show that the city doesn't discriminate against Jews. Another intersection maybe would have the verses on the crosswalks, you know, "For all who sinned, thou shalt fall short of the glory of God. The wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life in Christ Jesus our Lord. He made him who knew no sin to become sin for us, so that we might become the righteousness of God in him. And if you confess with your mouth, Jesus is Lord, and believe in your heart that God raised him from the dead, you will be saved." In the center of this intersection may be a picture of the empty tomb with an angel proclaiming, "He is risen, he's not here." And this would demonstrate that the city doesn't discriminate against evangelicals.
Thank you, David, your time is up.
All right.
Sunshine, she's still in the house? I don't see her. We'll go to Christopher Wall. Oh, is she coming? Oh, there she comes. Thank you, I'll get right back with you, Christopher. Sunshine, you're up.
And in my life, I've encountered a lot of traumas, obviously. My kid's dad was murdered, and then a couple days ago, my best friend was robbed and stabbed to death. But that's not why I'm here. What I, what I'm here for is, I'm very thankful for the cops that handle these situations. And I was hit by a cop last year in a car accident, and he went into shock because he had so much stress that he just automatically went into shock, and I had to pull him out of shock twice. And so I came here because these guys are seeing such horrific things in such big numbers, and I'm asking that you could give them better education tools to help them with their mental health stuff, because I really feel for them, because I know they're feeling what I feel when I see things out in the homeless community and things. So I came here to ask that maybe next year you could put a little funding towards that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. Christopher?
Hello, my name is Chris Wall. I'm legally the prophet of One Family Love. I was signed and chartered in 2013. I got jumped by the Spokane police for jaywalking once upon a time, because when I was younger, I was kind of arrogant with it. That being said, I've been homeless for 19 years. My mom warned me to walk with Jesus, turn the other cheek, be mean, even though I'm a bastard from Sturgis and pure Norwegian. So the goal here, like, this entire time that I've been chartered, like, I couldn't calm down enough to get my UBI to an EIN and a business bank account, even though I'm a pro fundraiser, and the goal is volunteer centers. If they're part of the program, we put them up, we put them in front of video games, because World of Warcraft is more addictive than heroin, right? And reestablish their nutritional value, plus their dopamines and like everything else, give chores on the inside, plus get people who want to teach them anything, everything at the bottom, like, the Catholic charity buildings, right? They're cool and stuff, but you have predators living on top, and people who are stuck in a tangent at the bottom being prey, right? Instead, there should be like a hippie commune at the bottom making food, washing people's feet, like, you know, resort spa, it should be, like, such buildings should be used to take care of the populace, right? Like, the goal is like volunteer centers, so like, it can be, like, back in the day, we had like IRFs, and, you know, we were a united community, right? Now, because of, there's, I don't want to get into the other side of this tangent, but there's people with funding who have, I've had, some of the greatest people in my life passed, right? I've seen more bodies on the street in the last four days. It's hard to even tell, like, I'm on, like, I was supposed to get home three weeks ago, okay? I'm in my dad's car, he's pissed, like, there was traffic tickets, right? He's 84, I'm 35, okay? Like, part, like, not just the bullies on the street of like some crazy stuff, but also the emergency with the opioid crisis. I challenge you all to actually join me on the street and walk through the people. Like, right now, my goal is to get buffer swords, PVC foam and duct tape, so I can inspire the youth to play with swords instead of with guns.
Thank you.
But I can build a tributary.
Thank you. Eugene Knowles next, and then Dream.
Eugene Knowles, I've been living here in Spokane since 2010. Couple things I noticed this evening is the red meat issues, guns, rainbow crosswalks. Once you bring these up, people get tensed up, and this gun thing really seemed to, the emotion in the room seemed to get out of hand. I'm a Texan. They got common sense laws in Texas despite all the propaganda, but the point is this. I just finished my little summer vacation. Most of the people know either I'm a homeless advocate. I went down to Texas. There's the Alamo down there, so they're going to make sure that the Alamo is nice. I came back up, I was in Seattle there. Alaska Way, they finished the new ferry building, you know they're going to keep that nice. When's the last time you guys were on Third Avenue in Seattle? Place is a disaster. I'm just looking at you. I never thought I'd see it like that. I saw a lot of places in my trip here over the 13 or 14 days, and then I got back here to Spokane to do graffiti. I'm starting to change my moniker to Cidyscape, because what I saw, I was in the Tenderloin in San Francisco, and because people were mentioning that tinfoil, here in Spokane, I never saw, but I saw it at noon. So it's, it's all around the country, but here's my final point. It looks like Spokane is getting burnout over homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. Dream?
Good evening, once again. First of all, I'd just like to say I love rainbows. I love when the sun is shining and it's raining, and I can go outside and look at Friendship Park across the street from my house and see a rainbow over it. And then I also wanted to talk about something else. There's, there's been a solid amount of data that backs up the fact that if you have, if you have a road and you have a travel lane in each direction of cars, and you have space to expand that road, you know there's several things you can do. You could add a sidewalk, you could add a bike lane that's protected, you could add another lane that is dedicated to transit, you could add another lane for cars. Adding another lane for cars increases your throughput by the least amount out of any of those things. With that in mind, there's a lot of streets in Spokane that are bus routes, and a lot of those streets have more than one travel lane in each direction where there is a bus route. And I think that it's And I think that it's really, it would be really beneficial for this council, for the streets that are in Spokane that have buses that run along them, to go through and look at all these streets, you know, in y'all's districts or wherever it is, look through and see, is it possible, you know, can we transform one of these lanes into a bus-only lane? Because the reality is, people are not going to ride the bus if driving is faster and more convenient, and driving will be faster and more convenient than riding the bus if the bus gets stuck in the same traffic that your car gets stuck in. So that's one thing I wanted to mention. In addition, I also wanted to talk about safer use sites. We hear a lot about open drug use in Spokane, and I walk around downtown a lot as a musician who performs at night, and, you know, I see it. And it's not fun to see, but, and it's not good that, you know, if we're walking around and we're seeing this stuff, and, but the reality is, we can't throw hundreds of thousands of dollars at police budgets in order to try to do this. It doesn't work. If, if these people are going to do this, and if we give these people a place to go, and we give these people a place that...
Thank you, Dream. Your time is up. Last one is Dennis Flynn.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Hi, Dennis. Hi, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. Today is June 24th, 2024, and the high temperature today was 81, I think. The highest temperature ever recorded in Spokane on June 24th was 98 degrees in 1912. At the June 3 meeting, we had a proclamation celebrating Pride. During the June 10 meeting at the MLK Center, we had a proclamation celebrating Juneteenth. In May, we had a proclamation celebrating Asian and Pacific Islander Month. You know what we didn't have in May? A proclamation celebrating mothers, even though there was one meeting without any proclamations. And I probably shouldn't be surprised that we now find ourselves at the last meeting of June, another meeting without any proclamations, with no proclamation celebrating fathers, even though Fathers' Day was started in Spokane back in 1910. Wondering if anyone on the council has considered making a submission to the Wikipedia page for woke-ism, requesting "We all belong" be added as a tagline for the page. Regarding a previous speaker, I am so happy to see the acknowledgement that the inclusion, equity, and diversity cult is a religion. Regarding another previous speaker, 46% of all abortions are BIPOC unborn, while Black and Hispanic lives make up only 32% of the population. Approximately 30 of the 65 million abortions since 1974 are BIPOC. I argue that abortion is the most systemically racist institution in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. That concludes open forum. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. It's been moved in second. All of the favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Please clear the chambers.